All right, I'm ready.
Okay, it is six thirty-eight, I'm calling the regular council meeting for Tuesday, October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three to order. Ms. Monroe, if you'd like to call the roll.
Mayor Don Barnard.
Here.
John Merriman.
Here.
Sharon Hindren. Charlie Campbell.
Here.
Nicole Shuck.
Here.
Bob Orsini.
Here.
Ryan Green.
Here. We'd like to have Father Jesse Chick of the Church of the Ascension come lead us in invocation.
We begin our prayer in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit.
Amen.
Almighty our living God, we thank you for the wonder of our being. You are all gracious and good and worthy of our praise. Thank you for creating and sustaining us in being. Thank you that you made us your only image and likeness to exist in community. We thank you for our community, our city council elected officials, our civil government. Guide them in their acknowledgement of your calling, so that they may perform their service to the community faithfully. Be with our judges, attorneys, and law enforcement, glad that they will never neglect or abuse their authority, but that they will stand firm for truth and justice. Keep them safe from harm's way as they serve you. In a special way, oh Lord, we pray for this council meeting tonight. Give these council members wisdom and guidance as they deliberate on the items before them. May every decision be righteous in your side for our benefits and for your glory. Make this humble prayer through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming tonight. We've got a lot on the agenda tonight, so it might be a busy night. Our first item is action on the minutes for September ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, and October third, two thousand and twenty-three. Do we have any questions or comments from councils on these or changes? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve is written.
As a block or singular?
That's a block.
I'll second.
Charlie Campbell.
Yes.
Nicole Shuck.
Yes.
Bob Orsini.
Yes.
John Merriman.
Yes.
Mayor Barnard.
Yes.
Ryan Green.
Yes.
Thank you. The next item is citizens' comments on matters not on the agenda. Do we have anyone tonight, Ms. Monroe?
Um, I don't have any speaker slips.
Was there anybody here who wanted to speak on any matters? Okay, moving along. Council committee reports. The first is planning and zoning. They met on October tenth. Their next is next Tuesday at six thirty in the council chambers. Mr. Green, do you have anything for that?
Yeah, we discussed briefly a variance for sidewalk and for trees, and then the bulk of it was the project you'll see tonight. Our next meeting, we'll have to talk about that. Do we have, I'm not sure if we have anything on the agenda currently.
At this time, we don't.
Okay, we'll have to talk about that one. Okay.
Design review board also met on the tenth. Their next is next Tuesday at five thirty in council chambers. Ms. Monroe or Mr. Sanner, do you guys have anything for that one?
Yeah, we had one application that they worked through, and that was assigned for Babeli's Pizza. They were able to work through that with the applicant and approved the new signage for that particular building. The other thing I wanted to point out is we did have a resignation on that board. The chairman, Nathaniel Ashbrook, due to some obviously conflicts of time, which I think we all struggle with, was not able to retain his seat any longer and submitted his resignation, so we thank him for his time of service and input. He was a part of that first initial board, and he was also the chairman, so kudos to him for taking that on his shoulders. But at this time, we do have a vacancy. If council would like for clerk of council to put out a request for interest, you may want to discuss that at other business at the end, and then we can come back to that.
Thank you. Next was finance. We met tonight. That's why we're late. Our next is eleven eight at five P M. in the administrative conference room. Is there anything that we need to bring up, Bob?
Just procedural process, kind of laying some stuff out, more to come, part of the process.
Safety and service, their next meeting is November eighth at five forty-five in the administrative conference room. Rules met tonight. Mr. Orsini?
Uh, we had a good discussion about rules tonight. We're looking at updating our current rules of council. The biggest change would be changing village to city, and then some individual items underneath of it, just to kind of get current with the times in some case and to bring it into a modern condition. The biggest change, and all the members of council will receive this, would be its recommendation to add a City of Johnstown Code of Ethics and Conduct. It's a document, it's about ten pages. Gets a little more finite details about process, behavior, expectations, and communication. You'll receive both the updated current rules of council with proposed amendments and changes and additions, and the complete Code of Ethics addition as well.
Thank you. The point of that is we want to put more emphasis on the council, to meet a standard that we need to set for the community, so. The next is parks and rec. Their next meeting is the sixth at one P M. in administrative conference room. And then the events committee will be meeting November ninth at five thirty in administrative conference room. Any committees I missed tonight? Okay, director reports. Chief Smart submitted his report to the council. Does council have any questions on Chief Smart's report that they would like him to explain or speak about tonight? Nobody? Okay. The first item of legislation is Table's Legislation Resolution two thousand and twenty-three dash thirty. A resolution accepting an annexation of two hundred and eighty-five point nine three acres, more or less, from Monroe Township, Licking County to the City of Johnstown. Is it still the applicant's, I'll let you come up?
Good evening, Aaron Underhill. I'm the agent on behalf of the petitioners in that annexation. We feel it's appropriate that the annexation and zoning and other matters related to the PD District be considered for a final vote at the same meeting, so at least by tabling tonight, we can get this on the same parallel with the zoning, so we would ask that you please postpone it.
And so we do not need a motion, right? Ms. Monroe, since it's table?
Hi.
Okay, so we're going to leave that table. Okay. The first public hearing of legislation is Resolution two thousand and twenty-three dash thirty-one. A resolution of acceptance of the framework final report. Mr. Sanner, would you like to explain what was going on there?
Sure, I may be able to provide some visual aids. As you know, Licking County, over the last year, has been doing a framework initiative, and this is the final product. What they're asking is all participating communities that had a active member there to pass a resolution. It's not a binding, reiterate that, it's not a binding agreement. It's just a nod to the fact that there's a lot of good material in there, and there's some that we can use. There's some that we may not want to use, but it really speaks to the collaborative effort that existed amongst the county in putting this together. Like I said, there's a tremendous amount of material in there, a lot of which I think is really relevant for what we're facing, and we're obviously doing our comprehensive plan at the moment, so just trying to lock arms with the rest of Licking County in this particular initiative, this is all that that does. You read the resolution. I don't think that there's anything in there that should elevate any concerns. If you have not accessed it, I know postcards went out to each council representative, giving you a link to where you could access it online. I have it pulled up now. It's a pretty beefy document, given the area that it covered, not surprising. So if there's any questions, I can try to answer those questions, but I would encourage you, if you haven't already, to go online, check out the link, and roll through that document and read through it pretty heavily. Again, there's a lot of good material that's in there.
This is the first time that all of Licking County communities got together to do something like this, correct?
Yeah, and it's not all of Licking County, but it is a majority of the population. And what they really tried to focus on was initially that one sixty-one corridor, but then it kind of morphed from there. So I think they're looking for opportunities to maybe engage other townships and communities that were outside of the scope of this particular document, but very large portion, very large representation of the Licking County area, so really good success.
Okay. Does council have any questions or comments on this? Okay, how about the public? Anybody from the public want to speak about this? Mr. Maine?
Thank you, Mayor. My comments are not only this piece of legislation, but all future pieces of legislation, even though it's not here. And that is, as the council is well aware of the financial position, when we're passing this legislation, it would be advised or recommended that you attach a dollar value to all legislation that you're passing, so you know what to expect, not only tonight, but in the future, just like this, what it's going to cost to do it. And that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. We are just adopting this plan, correct, Mr. Sanner?
Yeah, just a resolution, adopting.
An overall arching plan for the community. There's no cost for us with this?
Zero cost. Well, I'll roll that back. There was an initial participation fee, but that was back when the initiative started, back in two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two, before my time, so I'm speaking out of school, but my assumption is that there was a contribution. I believe most municipalities in the area, except for townships, but municipalities participated, I believe, based on population, and it was around five or ten thousand dollars that that was done at that time, so.
It was based on population of the cities, I believe?
There was some metrics that they utilized in order to arrange the numbers that they tried to get from each community based on, I believe, population, so, like I said, I don't want to speak out of school, kind of before my time, whenever the initiative really got rolling.
Okay. Any other public comment on this item? Okay, hearing none, do I have a motion from council? I'll make the motion for that we move Resolution two thousand and twenty-three dash thirty-one forward.
Second.
Nicole Shuck.
Yes.
Bob Orsini.
Yes.
John Merriman.
Yes.
Mayor Barnard.
Yes.
Ryan Green.
Yes.
Charlie Campbell.
Okay. The next three pieces of legislation, or introduction of legislation, they're all ordinances, so they require an initial reading, initial reading, then a second reading. The first is ordinance nineteen dash two thousand and twenty-three. This ordinance is amending the official zoning map of the City of Johnstown, rezoning approximately four hundred and seven point three acres to the planned development district. Mr. Sanner, if you could speak on this?
Sure. So as Ryan mentioned a little bit earlier, they've been working through the PD District document that has been presented to the zoning board, part of the eleven sixty-four of our PD application process. That's the route that it needs to go. Last Tuesday, they voted unanimously to send this over to council for your review, giving you the opportunity to review that. This is an introduction. There'll be two readings. With that being said, the applicant is here tonight. I've asked them to kind of give just a preview or some of the similar presentations that were given to the zoning board, so that you have a little bit of background in case you weren't able to participate in those meetings. And the applicant is here tonight, and if it's appropriate, this may be the time where the applicant would come up, give a little bit of background. I believe they would be available for questions if council had questions. The other two items, B and C, I don't want to touch on those just yet, if that's okay with you.
Yes. Before we get started, real quick, I just want to make sure it's okay with council tonight, since this is a big issue, and this is only a first reading. Normally, we would just do the introduction, and then it's table till the next session. In speaking with the city manager and some of the others, it's, the idea of council's okay with it, is we do the introduction, we ask our questions, and we allow the public to ask any questions they may have, so that they don't feel like they're being ignored tonight, if that is the will of council, if we do that tonight. We won't make any votes on it tonight, but just that people coming tonight do not feel like they're ignored. Your thoughts on that?
That was similar to how we did it in zoning. We had a high-level topic the first, well, we had a presentation, and we did four meetings in zoning, so we did the high level kind of the first night, asked our questions, and then kind of went through it line by line after that, so.
Okay, so if that's, will council go ahead and do that, Mr. Maine?
Trying to get this microphone right. Can everybody hear me? Good evening, members of council. My name is Aaron Underhill. I'm with Underhill and Hodge, I'm the zoning attorney, representing the Johnstown Land Company, AKA the New Albany Company. With me tonight is Jamie McNally with the company, and Jamie will kind of fill in the blanks as I'm not able to. So, Ryan, I apologize, you got to listen to this again, but here we go. That's all right.
At least you get an apology.
Appreciate all the time, Ryan, and the commission put into this. We, in fact, were before them four different times, and many of us got home, you know, after eleven o'clock on one of those nights, but good discussion, and a lot of good things came out of it. Also appreciate individual efforts of all of you today and different conversations we've been able to have, you know, kind of preliminarily to understand your desires, and of course Sean, MKSK, Mr. Ligon on utilities. It's been a true team effort on everybody's part, and a lot of time and effort has gone into getting us to this point. But I thought I'd go back, as they say, the best place to start is the beginning, kind of as to how we got here. Important thing here that we want to note for everybody is we are now calling this Johnstown Plan Development. I think I've got opportunity, plan, development in the text. We're continuing to be sensitive to what we would like to call this PD District, and, you know, whether at the end of this, we all come up with another name, or I don't think anything we place in this document, when to be in the name of the development in particular, that's sort of a whole nother marketing effort, but I wanted to be mindful of the fact that you had asked us to kind of consider other names, and we're still open to suggestions. So, you know, I had the pleasure of working on the Intel project in its infancy, and, you know, on the zoning land use entitlement side, and, you know, obviously, this is great for the area in many respects. It's also a shock to the area, and I think we're all still kind of getting our heads around it, even though the construction has started over there, but, you know, we understand that Johnstown is particularly influenced and will be, you know, changed in many respects as a result of that project being announced on its doorstep. But we want you to know that as we continue through this process, and this is going to be, we're lucky enough to have this approved, a long-term relationship extending at least a decade, I'm sure. We want to make sure as we're going through and sort of providing things that are complementary to Intel and are, in some respects, an extension of it for its suppliers, that we're also being sensitive to and respectful of the roots and the history here in Johnstown. And so as we move ahead, you know, when we go through development plan approvals, et cetera, I think we'll be getting into things like architecture, et cetera, and trying to make sure we maintain and allow the character of Johnstown to evolve, so that is important to us. So one of the reasons, we've actually been, as a company, working on this for quite a while, since the Intel announcement, but one of the things we wanted to do was be respectful of the community's efforts to sort of catch up here and sort of, at least at a very high level, understand, you know, what it wanted to see in terms of types of development and types of growth, understanding that inevitably something is likely to happen on this property, given its location, it's just, it's reality, right? A lot of pressure, but on this area across from the largest economic development project in Ohio's history. So, you know, I think the first thing that the city did was, you know, contact MKSK and get a framework plan together, and that framework plan in study recognizes, you know, at a very high level, that, you know, here we're going to have, we have what you've called your jobs area, and so the jobs area is intended, at least as I read the framework plan, to really be focused on bringing economic development to the community. It also does recognize that it's a sign of the times that we have some mixed use as a part of that, and that's an attractor of these economic development projects, and so part of what we're doing here is trying to, you know, align ourselves with the framework plan's recommendations. Improving the city's fiscal position, I think that is probably everyone's number one priority. We'll get into some of the things we're doing to hopefully assist with that. We believe that, you know, there's a great opportunity to increase your income tax base with employees rather than residences. Improve your fiscal position through other means such as new community authority charges, which we'll get into here later, and then also control your own destiny in terms of being able to provide utility services to the area, which, you know, utilities are actually the number one ingredient for development. Without them, you can't really reap the benefits of some of these big projects. You know, this area, providing water and sewer service is key. We have other regional players involved that will be assisting with the street network and, you know, state of Ohio's contributing dollars. We've got the TID. City of New Albany, for their part, is improving Green Chapel Road. So there are a lot of people who are having an influence on this area and recognize its importance. So as luck would have it, you had the Licking County framework principles and plan for you this evening. We just decided we'd highlight a few of the items that are really relevant here, but certainly understand that's a big document with a lot of different jurisdictions with interest, but certainly I think there's a recognition in all planning documents these days that economic development and mixed use are important components. Roadway improvements, I'm sure we'll get into some discussion on this, state, county, TID, and even the market, private developers will pay our fair share for the roadways, but there are a lot of different interests here in not only serving this particular property, but ensuring that traffic in and around Johnstown can improve. And I think we're going to be probably working on this for many years to come as well, given the impacts of all the employees coming to the area. This is just sort of a heat map of anticipated workforce capture related to the project, and you can see it's pretty far-reaching. You know, Intel itself, while not in Johnstown, is going to be attracting a lot of traffic to and from it, and so that's part of the equation. Obviously, you know, I think a lot of things have been gotten out ahead of, but there's probably some more work to do, I'm sure, and it will not be hopefully all on your back, we're certain of that. So kind of balance, or sort of touch base on all of these items. We want to make sure that, you know, you have a balanced growth in your community. We're increasing and enhancing your fiscal situation, be respectful of the community's vision and its history, and then we believe this is a real opportunity to enhance services and amenities in the community if done correctly. So economic development. I think several of the tools you put in place are essential to this, and I think the one thing that, you know, the New Albany Company has a history of is master planning the community. And while this is not of the scale of New Albany, it is a significant increase in the acreage of your community. We recognize that here in the outskirts, and I think having one master developer for this area creates a lot of opportunity for synergies, for consistency across development, and having a very forward-thinking approach rather than taking each individual project as they come, which is kind of the death by a thousand cuts. So we have an opportunity before us, and the documents that we've put forth and drafted, I know we've got a lengthy text here. I was the poor sap who had to draft it, but the intent there was to make sure that, you know, we are going to have a master plan community going from east to west and north to south that makes a lot of sense and is cohesive. I think an important part of what you did in terms of the early steps here in kind of controlling your own destiny was creating your PD District. You know, it's interesting today that some of the types of uses that are even suppliers of Intel that we expect in what are going to be some areas one and two, they could not locate anywhere in your community today based on your code. Those sorts of uses are not even listed. So the planned district was a tool that allows you guys to get creative and to allow those opportunities to happen without overhauling the entire code and maybe opening up some unintended consequences, so that was very important. Invest in infrastructure. So, you know, we believe the roads, the utilities, and then we've heard loudly and clearly that the creation of a parks and open space network are going to be three things that we really want to accomplish, aside from the private development here. So I know we'll be talking about the parks and open space some here later, but, you know, I think between the NCA, the new community authority charge that we're proposing, the ability to place non-school TIFs on property, which, you know, is a rediversion, is a diversion of taxes, of not of the schools' taxes, but of some other taxes for infrastructure needs. We're going to create a lot of opportunities and a lot of new revenue streams that the city hasn't been able to enjoy previously. This new community authority charge is, what we're proposing is a nine point seven five mil voluntary charge only on the property in this district, and so this is essentially a voluntary tax assessment that under the Ohio Revised Code, if the property owner is willing to subject itself to it, can be a significant generator of revenue to maybe not dollar-for-dollar pay for infrastructure, but provide the means to pay debt service on financing. So it's like when you buy a home, right, you put a little bit of money down, and then you use your monthly income to pay your mortgage, and you can buy much more- mortgage and you can buy much more house than you could if you were paying cash. So, this is a revenue source solely on the back of those that are going to be within this development. It's been a tool that's been implemented at various places in central Ohio and has been a real driver of, of the success that New Albany's had. And it's important to point out that this charge will even apply when there's an abatement on properties. So, obviously, abatements for large development, economic development projects are important, but we've been successful in getting the, the market in general to agree to pay that charge even though the rest of the property taxes will be abated for some period of time. Thoughtful entitlements. So, you know, we, we are going to be going into some detail about the different subareas and the uses that are allowed as we propose them. We have a laundry list of development standards from setbacks to lot coverages to densities, to building heights that are very carefully thought out and are particular to different parts of the project. And, you know, there's, there's a means and a reason behind every one of those, and I'm sure we'll, we'll talk about those as well this evening. Can't emphasize enough that we recognize the school district is basically a source of great pride for the community, very important to the community that's been made a lot of clear to us, and we of course realize that on our own anyway. So, we have been in deep conversation with the school district. There's another item on your agenda tonight about your, the agreements that are proposed, but to ensure that they are going to be enhanced also fiscally and then responsibly bringing new population to the community through the residential we're proposing in a way that doesn't harm them in terms of their capacity and their fiscal, fiscal state. So, those have been very productive and very honest conversations, and part of what we're going to commit to in the zoning here that we're presenting is to ensure that those things happen. Boiling it down to its essence, the, the arrangement with the school district for major economic development projects that would get tax abatements would be that they would get 27.5% of the city's income tax shared with them during any abatement period until they are made whole on what they were losing as a result of the abatement. And this is basically with the change in the facts of where we are and what we're doing here, this is basically the same agreement that the city of New Albany and the Johnstown School District has today. And I think Dr. Wagner, I saw, I don't know if you all saw an article on NBC4 today that talked about how he believed that had been a benefit to the district and that there are a lot of wins here even with an abatement in place. And so, not really my place to discuss that, but I will say that what a lot of people don't realize is that there are close to 5,000 acres of either developed commercial land or to-be-developed commercial land with announced projects in the Johnstown Monroe School District already and the business park that my clients developed. And, you know, those things, those things are going to continue in perpetuity and, and will be a boon for the school district, and this will just be in addition to that. So, very little residential compared to, you know, ultimately with this project will be, you know, 62, 6300 acres of commercial. The project itself. Starting point, whenever you're planning a big piece of property is to understand things like topography and environmental features. And so, as we go through the slides here, I, I just wanted you to be mindful that as you look on the left side of this slide, which is the west, and Clover Valley's on our west there, Green Chapel on our south, just to get you oriented. We have a large flat area of fields on the west that lends itself to these larger buildings and larger projects like you see down, down the road a little bit to the south, and that's why we feel like that's the most appropriate location for those sorts of uses. Topography becomes a little different and a little more varied as you go eastward, and you can also see some streams and other environmental features on the east side that really lend themselves to more of a mixed-use environment such as, you know, residential and restaurants and, and service-oriented uses. So, walking through our plan here, we've, we, we have five different subareas. Really, the majority, the great majority of the project is in subareas one and two. I'll get into it in a moment while we have two A and two B, but those are where your larger employment generating and economic development driving uses are going to be. Subareas three and four are mixed-use and residential, and then subarea five, I'm going to get to that shortly, that's a smaller area of 25 acres that we, we want to leave our options open for reasons I'll explain. This is another look at, at the subareas. So, subarea one, 182.7 acres. We have proposed basically office, major institutional, manufacturing, production industrial, data centers, warehousing, all of the things that if you, you're getting drive to the south, you're going to see. And while we have not made particular commitments to architecture, it's a very subjective thing. We have provided tried and true development standards that we have used to see some of those things that exist today. Those are in this text, and we've also, which we haven't done in previous zonings and other places, we've provided character images to demonstrate the level of quality that, and character that we want to be held to and you can hold us to as we come through with individual projects. Subarea two is, is basically the same. Subarea two B is actually a property owned by the Ford Authority. It's there on the southeast side of Enterprise Drive. We treated that a little differently because we actually have a site plan that's preliminary in nature with a group called Huntington Industrial, and they wanted to be, for the reasons I stated earlier, that the code doesn't really encompass some of the uses they would like to maybe develop and operate there. We included them in a partnership, not a, a legal partnership, but in a spirit of partnership in this. And that, they are in subarea two B. My client controls subarea two A, and so we bifurcated those so that we could demonstrate to you some of the things that are going on in subarea two B because we know a little bit about that. In particular, these are the, these are very preliminary block buildings that we're showing here for Huntington Industries, and they do have a representative here this evening if, and who could speak to this more particularly. The architecture in subarea two is the same as I showed you in subarea one in terms of character and quality. They would be held to that same standard in subarea two B as would be applicable to two A and one. Okay, so, you know, we know that the big topic of conversation is the residential component that, that we're proposing along with this project, and this was a quote from Grohl Licking County's director, Alexis Fitzsimmons, "Housing is an economic development issue." This is becoming true. I, I've worked in 40 different jurisdictions plus in my career, and I can't tell you how much in the last five years this has become top of mind for especially suburban communities that, you know, a mix of uses where employees can live, live close to where they work, bike to work, and also, you know, on their lunch hour or dinnertime, go grab a bite to eat or, or a beer after work, and having that in close proximity is actually something that if you can't demonstrate to some of these major economic development projects, they'll check you off the list, they'll strike you from the list, and you won't even be in the running. So, we believe this is very important to attracting the sorts of uses that, for lack of a better term, are a little bit sexier. And, and so that's why we're proposing them in, in these subareas. So, again, I don't want anybody to get caught up in the actual architecture here. These are quality images demonstrating, you know, the quality of materials, et cetera. But in subarea three, that you can see here, which is west of Ming Street and generally south of Duncan Plains Road, this is the only location where we could do purely multifamily development. And we will also be able to do, provide up to 50% mixed use in this subarea, and that would be a bleed over from subarea four, which is demonstrated here. Mixed use, we have defined in this zoning text as contain, an area containing some residential, but also a requirement for at least two other uses with the development plan when it comes in. So, those would be things like restaurants, maybe small medical office. You know, an image I, I threw into the text was, you know, downtown Granville, that's sort of the vibe and the vision, maybe with a little, little more vibrancy and a little more intensity given where we are across the street from Intel. But if you could picture those uses all coexisting, that's, that's the goal here. In subarea five, and I'm anticipating that we'll talk about this, we, we do want to leave our options open, and, and what we have said is we will develop this either with the uses that are allowed in subarea one, which is just to the north, which are those bigger projects, or we could develop them as a mixed-use area just like subarea four. And the reason is, if you look at this location, we don't know what the future holds, and, you know, if, if some of these other properties to the east and west came into play, it might make some sense for this to be something other than more, sort of a major employment user on this site. And, but, but the point is, if, if we make a decision one way or the other on which set of uses we're going with, we're going to be stuck with those on the balance of that subarea. We can't mix those up, so I'm sure we'll have some questions on that later. We were asked to put together a bubble diagram that kind of demonstrated where these uses would be. Here's, you know, the, the big flat area there on the west, data center, industrial-type uses, and then over as you get to the east, a little difficult to see, but pods of, of mixed use and residential, and at a very high level, that's, these are, these are some ways this could lay out. Closer look there with a little more detail. So, I want to talk about the, the residential. So, we have proposed a total of 1,221 multifamily residential units, and you may ask how we arrived at that number. I know Mr. Green's asked how we arrived at that. Basically, we took, generally accepted one unit an acre is what we thought Johnstown typically would look for on a single-family development, you know, that's not rural in nature. And then we took what your current code says is allowed on multifamily, which is five units an acre, which frankly is really not a multifamily density anymore. And we, we applied a, a middle ground there, three units an acre over the entirety of, of the acreage within the development. Now, we are not, we are not saying that every individual development's going to have a maximum of three units. It's, it's, that's the aggregate, and our expectation is those will be clustered in different places, which is, is actually a good thing in terms of the economic development component because it opens up more land for those sorts of uses. You drive around any of the newer apartment developments, you know, in central Ohio, they are, you know, at a much higher density of three units an acre now in order to provide amenities and provide walkability, et cetera. And that's how we arrived at that number now. We, we have three subareas where, where those units could be allowed. Those are in three, four, or possibly subarea five. And so, we've provided this unit bank transfer procedure that would allow on a, if a development plan warranted it, a specific development plan where we showed you exactly what you're getting, if it were warranted, it would allow us to, to move those units around as appropriate and with the appropriate approval. So, wanted to, so a little, little much to get into. You all can, you know, dig into the details here, but, you know, this is a situation where, this is a sample scenario where we would have units as of right in subareas three and four. We're actually saying 450 units in each of those two subareas would be permitted by right in terms of use and density today, subject to development plan approvals, and there's a lot to that, in subareas three and four. But if you wanted to move those between those two subareas, you could transfer units into the bank and withdraw them and place them into the other subarea through this process. Heard a lot about, well, this may be difficult to keep track of. I don't see this as something that's going to happen very often, maybe, maybe once or twice, given, we're really not talking in the grand scheme of things about enough units that, you know, we're, we're going to have multiple transfers. I could see a situation where maybe we, we, we need 475 rather than 450 and we do a tweak like that, but this is not going to be something that's administratively difficult for your staff, which, you know, we understand is undersized right now, but it is something that we think is important for all of us in order to maintain some flexibility. Now, in terms of these multifamily units, you know, we want them to be a minimal impact to the community and to the school district. We have a lot of, a lot of consternation about being compliant with federal fair housing laws. I think we all should. Those are there for a reason. There's, there are laws against discriminating based on family status. And so, everything that we've proposed here, we have been very mindful of. We're trying to really reach a young professional type of demographic here. We think that, for the reasons I mentioned before, the employees are going to come to the area, not just from Intel. That's really kind of the tip of the iceberg. The suppliers are going to be bringing many, many more. Those sorts of individuals are going to want to live in a dynamic environment where they can be close to where they live and, and they can work, and, and they can live and play there as well. So, a lot of the items that I'm going to go through now are intended to really hit that demographic in terms of the design of these apartments. So, your current code requires there to be minimum square footages for apartments. And you can see that these actually, in many respects, are the size of small homes or sizable homes in some instances. And so, if we were to take your code on its face, we don't believe we're going to be achieving the demographic makeup of residents that, that we want. So, we have in our text, I'm just going to summarize, have reduced the square footage minimum for one-bedroom apartments to 500 square feet with a maximum of 800. For two bedrooms, we are at a minimum of 650 square feet to a maximum of 950. And for three bedrooms, it would be 800 to 1,200 square feet would be the range. Now, with the three bedrooms, we are only allowing 5% of the, the units, total number of units in the community to, to be three bedrooms, so 95% will be one and two bedrooms. We have also made a commitment in, you know, this is one I really had to research, but that we would, and, and this is compliant on its face with fair housing laws, that there would be a maximum of two occupants permitted per bedroom in a, in a multifamily unit. So, you, you are, there is guidance from HUD, the Department of Housing and Urban Development, that says that that on its face is proper, and so we felt comfortable making that commitment, and that's another way that, you know, we think we're going to, to be able to get to the product type that we're promising. Whoops, can I go backwards? Oh, yeah, yeah, okay. You know, some, some people, you know, some people have a, you live in a certain area and you have a kind of a view of what you think an apartment is because that's what's in your community. We wanted to show you some examples of apartment layouts that would sort of meet the underlying requirements we're talking about size-wise, and, you know, we feel very comfortable that, you know, the market is such that, that we'll be able to meet these size minimums and maximums and, and provide an amenity, a living amenity that is still attractive for those young This is a comparison to your Leafy Dell product. You know, I think what we're proposing is very different from this, which, you know, I can't see all these numbers, but, you know, well, you see here 990 to 1,385 square feet. How many bedrooms is that? Two to three?
Two to three.
So, you know, we think this is going to be a, a very different product from that, and hopefully if done in more of a mixed-use environment, we'll feel a little different. Bridge Park is another example. Bridge Park is another example of, you know, this is not what we're bringing here, but it, Jamie, I'm going to bring you up for a minute, because I think you'll know some of the stats on this one.
Yeah. Yeah. We would be happy to, as we go through the process, to coordinate a tour to go around the different multifamily projects with city council and planning commission to kind of get a flavor of what's out there, what's in the product type, what's working, what we like and what we don't like. You know, as we think about planning the multifamily, we don't really want to be on an island. We also want to create a sense of place. There are a few good examples in central Ohio where they do that. Bridge Park, for example, that's one. That's a dynamic area. And Grandview Yard, Italian Village is another. Bridge Park and Grandview Yard combined, let's say they're about 2,000 units. And right now, combined, they have about 35 students entering the school district right now. And some of those students may not even be living there full-time right now. Those numbers were confirmed by the city and the developers of the project. So we're trying to benchmark the difference between a product like Leafy Dell versus a Grandview Yard product. As the rents increase, typically you're less likely to see students enter the school districts, or child-age students, I should say. But we don't know yet exactly how the appropriate design will be for the area. Keep in mind that in all my company and a subsidy, an affiliate, Johnstown Land Company, we're truly master planners and land sellers. So most likely scenario is we would be partnering or selling land with another local developer that specializes in this type of vertical construction. But, you know, there are guys in town that do a really good job, and nationally as well, finding a balance between creating a sense of place, but also being a member of the existing community as well. We've talked with planning commission about, well, what if there's a, you know, an amenity on-site that's open to the residents, but not, like a gym, for example, but is also open to the neighbors, you know, that they could join a membership as well? You don't need to live there to join it. Or, you know, there's other facilities. I think Italian Village does a pretty good job of that as well, bringing in the surrounding neighborhood. And we're going to continue planning so that's how we can engage, how we can emphasize connectivity so that this project is truly becomes a part of the Johnstown fabric and it's not on its own island. So, oh, the other thing that I want to say is, both, all these projects, they also incorporate for rent and for, I mean, to buy and for rental projects as well. The numbers by law, I don't think we can really dictate exactly the ownership versus rental, but we don't know yet if, what that blend would be in this, our plan development.
So one of the things that we wanted to do in demonstrating that is, we wanted to provide objective and real-world data points for you, so it's not just trust us, but, you know, we can back up those numbers with communications from those developments. And, but it's surprising to some people that you can design a product that yields that result. Before I move on from, from the multifamily aspect of this, we have, in conversations with the mayor and others, agreed to reduce the number of units we can develop to 900 initially. And that would be in a phased approach over time. And so we would not be able in any 18-month period to construct more than 300 units at a time. When we get to 600 units built, we would then have an evaluation by the city of, have we met certain benchmarks in order? And we wanted to do it then, because once we get to 900 and we want to build the last 321, we won't have the time to go through that exercise. So at 600, once they're up and occupied, we will evaluate what has happened to date. And if certain benchmarks are met, that would then be essentially a proof of concept, and it would enable us to develop the remaining number of the 1,221 units. Those include confirmation that the occupancy rate is the two per bedroom, a minimum rent on average received of $1.75 per square foot. And actually, I should have done the math, but let's just take a one-bedroom that's 700 square feet. That would be $1,225 a month for rent there, so that's not an insignificant amount of money. And so that, we're trying to achieve a level of quality that also will be attractive to the young professionals. So, let me see. Trying to find where my other commitments were there. All right, here we go. Actually, we got them right here. Okay. Lease rates, oh, and we cannot ask for those, we cannot ask for any more than the 600 units, or I'm sorry, the 900 units to be built until at least four years have passed. And the reason we're doing this, providing these phasing commitments is that, you know, if we're wrong, we don't believe we will be, based on everything we're doing here, but we don't want there to be an influx of children into the school district. Here again, don't believe that's going to happen. These are going to be designed in a manner that we're all going to be very happy with that end result. But the other thing we would have to prove at that point in order to get those additional units is that the fiscal impact from those units standing alone has been of a benefit to the school district, a net positive. Okay, parks, preservation, connectivity, leisure trails, this has been a big topic. It was at the planning commission. So first thing worth pointing out is, we have committed to leisure trails along all of the major public street frontages that are on the perimeters of the site, so Mink, Duncan Plains, Clover Valley, and Green Chapel. We will stub those as far as we can to rights-of-way, et cetera, so that they can be extended beyond our property. We have also agreed, both in a written letter to you, Mr. Mayor, and in a condition, I think that the planning commission required, was that we're going to sit down with the city and be part of a master plan for the trail network and for the road network. So we want all of the, all of the road and trails within our community to be purposefully built so that they can provide for future connections. We would love nothing more than to be able to provide a means to eventually connect to your downtown area. As I've said many times at the planning commission, that to us is a very important amenity. And we heard time and again, we don't want this to feel like an island out here. We don't want that either. We even agreed to, you know, to be defined, but to throw some money towards your consultants, because we know it's a burden on the city in order to help with that effort. And we want to be part of the solution. So, you know, that has been said publicly, it's in writing, and so, you know, we can hold our feet to the fire on that one. As far as parkland's concerned, this was also a big topic of conversation. I think there was some thought that maybe from our perspective, we'd like to write a check for a fee in lieu of parkland dedication rather than providing it onsite. I wanted to point out, we're agreeing to follow your code. And the default in your code, it says, words mean something. It says, for every, every multifamily, in this case, unit that is constructed, the applicant shall be required, shall be required, dedicate to the city 1,500 square feet of land area for parkland. If you look at this overall, if we were to build out all of the units that we're proposing, it would be over 10% of the site would be parkland. That's before taking into account open space, which will be inevitable through other things like setbacks and lot coverage maximums and just, as a matter of practical, practicality, you know, wanting to have green spaces within your development that are privately owned and maintained. And so this fee in lieu, it says, you know, if we were to ask you for that, it is a totally within city council's discretion as to whether to allow that to happen. We may request it, and it may be waived, and you may accept that request in certain circumstances, totally up to you. But this gives you all of the discretion in the world to tell us, hey, we like, we would like you to provide the required parkland in whole or in part within the district. Or maybe you find another opportunity where you want to use the money for a park that maybe serves the community in a better manner. But that is totally within your power to tell us which way you want it as we bring development through. This is the utility plan, very preliminary. I'm going to have Jamie back up here. This came up at the last planning commission meeting, and so we've made an effort to give a little bit more of a plan here that demonstrates how we intend utilities to get here.
I know Sean and Jack have been working tirelessly for the future of Johnstown Utilities. We've also been trying to kind of marry our plan with what Johnstown has. It's great that Johnstown has its own wastewater treatment plant and water plant, and those are great assets for the city. We also want to make sure that we are being fiscally responsible. We've been coordinating to make sure that we're maximizing gravity flow, minimizing additional costs as well, minimizing operational costs. Now, when we talk about the phasing, everything, utilities, the NCA, the zoning, everything kind of relates to each other, right? So as we talk about from a phasing standpoint, we think most likely areas two and the northern portion of subarea one will develop first. Not only do we think that the market is there for those, but also the utilities are there as well. Subarea two is already in the city of Johnstown, as well as the northern portion of subarea one. So let's say we have phase one for our utility standpoint. Water and sanitary is already to the site. If we have light manufacturing, there's probably going to be low water and wastewater demand. And we know that Johnstown has the capacity to handle that today. That could be a catalyst project for the city very soon. And if we went to phase two, the northern portion of subarea one, which is already in the city of Johnstown as well, and the utility lines are already along Duncan Plains. So we've been coordinating. It's not fully baked yet, but we feel pretty confident about where we're at. And then I guess Jack and Sean might have additional thoughts to chime in as well. We think it's important that we advance these plans as well so that at least to get a 30% set of plans this year, so that Johnstown can throw a hat in the ring on some grant applications as well. So. Thank you, Jamie.
So also wanted to point out that I find it to be very, very impressive that this is in your PD district code, and that is the different processes. And I want to talk a little bit about that. We were following those. Your code basically provides for major economic development projects to go through a special board called your Coda. Maybe a Coda process. The board is called, I forget, it's, I'm going to bounce it, but anyway, you got a board. But any project that is, meets a certain criteria for a use, such as a light manufacturing facility, a data center, something that has the prospect of bringing big economic development activity through income tax generation, new community authority and real property tax charges, and is at least 50,000 square feet in size, is eligible for that process. It doesn't mean that that project is exempt from some sort of scrutiny that otherwise would have. What it really means is it's intended to provide for a quicker turnaround so that you can have speed to market. And today, if you can have speed to market for these big projects, and you can show certainty of process and certainty of timing of that process, you are going to be in the running for a lot of these bigger projects that are likely to follow Intel. We had a lot of discussion at the commission, especially at the last meeting, about timing here, and why are you in a hurry? Well, we are in a cycle right now where decisions are being made by suppliers, and they have other opportunities in other locations. Let's face it, they all want to be right here if they can be. But they do have other options. And if some of them can't put a shovel in the ground for next year sometime, and the earlier the better during the construction season, this area may be crossed off the list. So I wanted to point out that this component of your code is very important in terms of achieving those sorts of projects in your town. Every other project will be subject to a final development plan review, which I think is probably typical of what you would do here in terms of reviewing development plans for a particular project. And so if, you know, most everything, other than those major economic development projects, will follow that path. So we filed our zoning documents. We've had, this is our fifth public meeting now, will obviously be before you again. And we're now to the point where the annexation that we tabled tonight is sort of getting married up time-wise with the zoning. And there are various agreements still in the works, some which have to be done after annexation occurs, such as creating the community investment area for the annexed ground. But we have the school district agreements that you're considering for the first time later tonight. But everything is coming together in a way that is very intentional, both on our part and I think on the city's part. And, you know, should afford an opportunity for this to be a very successful project. So I think I'm going to leave it at that right now. It's been a long presentation. I've thrown a lot at you. I just want to reiterate once again all of everyone's efforts to date. Sit up here all night and answer your questions. We know there's going to be a lot of them. But, you know, hopefully we've given you an overview that you're able to digest. And, you know, to the extent we cannot answer a question tonight, we would either take copious notes, or we'll welcome your comments after you get a chance to take all of this into account as between now and the next meeting. So I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess I'll go first with questions? I won't kill you with too many questions tonight. In section 2.2, the use chart.
Yes.
You have subarea three. Should that be a P in there?
For which?
For office use?
So that, that's a multifamily and mixed-use subarea. I am not opposed to having an office anywhere, if that is what you prefer.
I mean, you have it, you have it in the areas, you know, section, subarea five, which could be?
Yes, and I think that was only because, maybe I was trying to hammer home it's a mixed-use area, but yeah, I would add it to three if you think that's appropriate. Is that something council would like us to consider?
Are you guys thoughts on that?
Let's pull up the map again, Sean, for clarity.
Yeah.
If you have a map.
You're allowing office use in everything, but there's a subarea three is mixed out.
It's a good point, because it could have some mixed use there.
Yeah, that's, yeah, he has a point, yeah.
Mixed use for some office in just scale.
Because if it's mixed use and you have multifamily, you might have some offices on the first floor.
Yes. So I think we could.
Can you define the difference between office and mixed use with office?
I think, I think office is intended to be maybe more of a significant sort of use in terms of square footage and number of employees. And, you know, office could be, also be a, you know, in a mixed-use context, a dentist's office.
Yeah.
So maybe what we need to do is clarify the types of office that would be anticipated. I would anticipate in subarea one or two, it could be a big corporate office.
Right.
Right, and in the other subareas, it would be something lesser.
Right. Yeah, it could just be like a one-man shop kind of thing.
Yeah.
Okay. Staying in the use chart, if you could explain the community commercial use as a mixed use, subarea five, what is, what is the holdup from going, seeing subarea five identified as an economic development area and not a mixed use for multifamily?
So, you know, given the size of subarea five, on its own, it doesn't lend itself to, really 25 acres isn't a ton for the types of uses we're trying to attract under, you know, sort of subarea one and two. The reason we were leaving the door open to more of the mixed-use scenario was, here again, some of the properties along Green Chapel going east and west. If we were able, ever able to control those, or they became part of this district in some way, shape, or form, we thought that might create some other opportunities for the mixed use. And really, I think that's a scenario where that would happen. But, and really, we don't know what the market's going to tell us. Is that attractive for, you know, given that we don't control a lot of that land down there, is there going to be a market for that small of a piece if it's not part If it's not part of subarea one, we don't know. So, so those are the sort of, sorts of things we were grappling with.
Okay. And then, the last item in that area is parking structures. We have in subarea four, identified as a P, shouldn't these be more of a conditional use, and since they're new to this area, it's a new concept for this area, more of a conditional use instead of a primary effectively?
Yeah, I, I think, you know, mixed use lends itself more than anything to the possibility of those, and you will have a final development plan review of the, of the, the actual plan and what that would look like. We're willing to take a look at that, definitely. Our thought was, those are the most likely places for it, and it's not like it would escape review at all, it would still be subject to design and other review.
They'd be under two.
Under ground.
Parking, yeah.
Or under structure, right?
Yeah.
Yes, that's true.
So. And section two point six B, where we talk about phasing, we talk about at least fifty acres of property located within subarea one, could this be moved higher, or tied to a square footage of building space or a dollar amount of property value?
This goes to when the multifamily could come out of the ground as opposed to commercial, right? I, I would have to, we'd have to discuss that a little bit internally. I, I would rather tie it to acreage, only because how do you determine the value? Would it be, and when would that value be determined? For instance, if we have something vertical coming out of the ground, and we're six months into it, but it's only, you know, it's gonna take another eighteen months to build, how do we determine a value on a partially built structure, for instance? Obviously, if something like that is underway, it's going to be completed, but it seems like the administration of that could be difficult, so if anything, I'd rather consider an increase or a bump in that acreage, and ask probably the guys.
I would be more comfortable with moving the acreage versus leaving it at fifty, because at fifty, a smaller building could be, they might not use all that fifty acres, and then it's already made automatically phased to start a new set of multifamily then, where if we had more acreage, it, it kind of guarantees that we're gonna get a bigger project out of it.
Correct. The size, I mean, this is a clause that we've been putting a lot of brain damage into thinking about, too, and how this trigger works. The truth is, if there's a, a big economic development driver, a company's mostly gonna be looking for tax abatements, so the city and city council's gonna have a lot of influence on how that, that economic driver comes to the town. Now, there's a lot of economic development tools in your toolbox as well, and some that are coming, I, I believe so, that my recommendation, one, is probably to reach out to Jennifer Kreider, City Council, to discuss how, what their tax abatement incentive agreements are, and how that works to attract businesses, and we can kind of look at this holistically. One option, two, is with the NCA, if there's tax abatements, the timing of a construction isn't always dictated by the land sale. But, with the tax abatement, there's ways to structure and pilot payments regardless of the value of the land, so that the city has guaranteed some revenue in addition to just the increased value of the land. So, there's, it's, this is something where I agree we should probably put a little more thought into, but I think for a lot of reasons, I think the acreage seems to make the most sense to us right now.
And so, so I think the point, point is, yes, we would definitely look at it, at bumping that. Yeah, we'd have to talk with others to make that decision, I can't make that decision, but I think there are other ways that hopefully, if a sale does occur, that you can incentivize whoever buys the property to get started right away.
Okay.
I think, I think we should look at the metrics in which the permits are able to be applied for, and a timeline, and not necessarily the amount of land that they're proposing, because a hundred and eighty-two acres sounds like a lot, but Facebook's six hundred and sixty acres, Google's four hundred and fifty acres, so depending on what kind of economic development we're looking for, that's not a large chunk of ground. So, for a single user of a large size, right? So, so I don't necessarily think we should, when we're talking about this, focus on that key piece of how much land upfront, but I think it's the timeframe in which they can apply for the multifamily permits, and, and the like, defining what triggers it, and the length in which to get to the maximum.
Section three point three C, where it talks about subarea five.
Same, same, same vein here, I have a note here as well. I would like to see more detail on what, what the benefit is to the community with that conveyance to trigger the development of multifamily. Based on the appetite we are at, or above, the total appetite for multifamily with this agreement. So essentially, Johnson Land Company, NACO, is gonna control the future of multifamily development in Johnstown for a decade. That's not necessarily a bad thing, but it has a great deal of value. So, we want to make sure that the benefit to the community equals the value that it has the developer. Because based on what I'm reading here, after that conveyance, in three years, there could be nine hundred units coming out of the ground, right? That's, that's not a bad thing, I just want to make sure that the community sees the benefits that come with the benefits for the developer, because that's, that's, that's a huge opportunity to turn that property to its highest value.
That's fair, and, yeah, we, we just want to make sure those metrics are measurable and not, not subject to interpretation on either side, right?
Hundred, hundred percent.
That's the hard part, and we'll, we'll put up some more thought into it.
Put the work in on the front end.
Yeah, exactly.
Anybody else have questions in section two? Before we go to three?
Section two as a whole?
Kind of. I don't know if it's directly this, but if the controls for capacity in these properties or apartments, the occupancy controls were found illegal, deemed illegal, what does that do to the rest of the agreement? Does that put it all back to refresh, restart, reorganize? Do you just, do we just continue then without that control?
Well, first of all, I think it would be a zoning violation, and I don't know, add what the, you might not even know off the top of your head, but it's, it's usually a daily fine.
No, 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 I, that's second step, enforcement of that, which is, that I think we can manage. If a case gets brought, says this is unfair housing practices, and the gov- and we get, say, hey, you cannot make that a requirement to live here. So now, we go from an expectation of two people per bedroom to whatever. Now, what does that do to the agreement? It doesn't, it doesn't necessarily stop anything from moving forward unless we put it in here now.
Well, first before, but what is the ruling that got us to two that makes us think that that's awful?
So, there, there was a, there, there have been a lot of, there's been a lot of case law and administrative agency decisions from HUD over the past, whatever, since the Fair Housing Act was passed, I mean, fifty years, that left in doubt what you could and couldn't do, and so, I don't know the exact date, but it's been in the last ten years, the director of HUD issued a, a, a decision or a directive that said, on its face, this will be considered to be illegal unless there are extenuating factors. And so, in, in my view, it can be relied upon as, as, as the law and the gospel, it's an extension or interpretation of the law. You know, I can't imagine that would change, but if it, you know, I hate to put something in here that talks about, well, if it is a violation of the Fair Housing laws.
Right, right, then, then you're, 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 absolutely, hundred percent.
But all I can tell you is what it says now, and what it has said for, that directive has said for some number of years now.
And I have confidence in your assessment, but to do this seat justice, I would like to have a second opinion from, from our council or outside council.
Yeah, we can, we can provide a written opinion as to that.
Just to make sure we're aligned.
Okay. Anybody else in section two, article two?
Yeah, so, when we're defining initial permit date, okay, is that acceptance of building permits, or, or is that initial permit date, application date, set for? Do you know what I'm saying? Because that metrics is big, right? Because like, we all know that it's gonna take a long time to review.
Oh, issuance, should be issuance.
Issuance, okay.
Yeah.
And then, I noticed that that sets the date, so if I'm walking this correct, you have the initial permit date, eighteen months is the driver after the date, so you get a permit. So, what, the way it's reading in my, in my mind, you can correct me if I'm wrong, is that because you've worded in here, that you can have in or singular or multiple applicants, right?
Right.
At the same time, you could then be setting up for phased approval of multiple neighborhoods at one time? Which would then, I'm just walking it through as like, you have your eighteen months, we get to your, we get to eighteen months, if you have two people developing at the same time, or three parties developing at the same time, to get through phased, moves faster than to start anew, right?
Right, right.
So, I'm just looking at, as, that's why I was saying, I think the metrics in which we're gonna judge these numbers are what's gonna be like our driver as it comes to people gained or community, right?
Yes, and so, regardless of the number of applicants, the intent is that can, there can no, there can not be a right at any particular time within an eighteen-month period to build more than three hundred units collectively, regardless if it's one project or multiple. So, if you want to stick another look at that and tie that up, yeah.
I was just looking at.
So, it'll be three hundred completed before three hundred one start?
No, it's three hundred, it's the issue, how it reads is issuance of the permit, there could be zero completed.
And, and the thought here was.
You could have three hundred more.
Any impact on the district, and would be.
Before it's done, right?
Any, it, this was intended to phase in any, any impact to the school district, and so, let's say that, let's say in eighteen months out, only a hundred and fifty were built, yes, you could, you could then give permits to get you the remaining, you know, four fifty at that point, if that makes sense? But, that will at least still have been delayed in terms of, it would have gone on longer for that first three hundred units than originally planned.
Yeah, I was just reading it as a, if you're running multiples at one time, and you're doing phased approvals through those neighborhoods, we all know that, and if it's a development standpoint, it's faster, once you've started a neighborhood, it can, if you phased it to keep going than it is to start anew. So, that's why I was looking at it with, just the, the way the language is written, just to make sure that we get, when we're looking at for the school district, that we make sure that we're giving them as much leeway time as they can get in between.
Yes.
Which is the opposite of what you're trying to do, which I understand, so.
Yeah, no, but we, we, we want to get there, because that's what we promised the schools.
Right.
So, we, we want to, sometimes these things are difficult to.
Put a metric on them.
You know, I, I, I welcome the other comment, and if you want to take another look at it and tighten it up, and make it clear that, you know, we're not gonna, it's, it's only the first eighteen months when the three hundred units could start and end construction. Once eighteen months and one day comes, those three hundred are still on the table, even if they're not built, then you'd have the opportunity to apply for the other three hundred.
Any other questions or?
If we're going through it in order, I'd like to back up.
Okay, go ahead.
Two point four, similar uses, uses. It says, any use found to be similar shall be considered as a permitted or conditional use as applicable in a relevant use category through zoning district. So, essentially, if it's a similar use, it becomes part of what's approved. I want to be careful that we don't get into a telephone game situation, where this was similar to the original, this is similar to the similar, this is similar to similar, by the time you get to the end, we're this far apart from original to similar use. I don't know how to write that in, but these are some things I want to make sure that we're not getting into similar use arguments, of similar use arguments, of similar use arguments.
Yeah.
Because when it says it becomes part of, then it just becomes part of the whole, you know? I think it should all reference back to the original.
Is there something that comes into that about it?
About similar use determination?
It would be section two point four.
I'm thinking about your underline.
Oh, under, oh, yeah.
I could try to answer that.
This is written, it talks about.
It talks about similar uses to permitted or conditional uses, i.e. what's already in the table. So, I mean, we could always tighten up that language.
I mean, maybe my misreading it, but the way I read it is that the similar use would then become part of the original. So, it would be considered approved, and then you could reference that as similar use, and every time you do that, just get a little further away from the original intent.
Yeah, I, I would say it would be considered like the original uses for purposes of proceeding with development, but not for purposes of making future similar use determinations.
That's, that's, yes, it would always reference back to the original use for similar use, not any approved similar uses, if I said that word enough.
Right, right, that you don't end up with some sort of.
The telephone game, right? Yeah, some evolution to take you forward, that's.
Example I gave at the planning commission was, you know, I've had codes before say that, that retail uses are allowed, and they list certain products that could be sold, and then cell phones came along, and, you know, everything else, you could sell everything else, but cellphone wasn't listed specifically, and so, that's a similar use, everybody would say, if you're reasonable, right, that's the same as selling a, you know, a radio or, you know, something like that. So, that, that's the intent.
I, I'm not addressing the intent, I'm just trying to make sure we have guardrails on this nice and clean.
Protect ourselves.
Yep. The next would be section two point five, under prohibited usage, and this is, it's an open question to the council. Some pretty direct things that are laid out, one thing that is not addressed is marijuana.
Dispensaries.
Dispensaries, production, selling, any of those features, is that something that we would want, and this, we don't have to talk about it now, but just something to consider in the future as a prohibited use, is that something we would want to consider?
I think we did breach that subject in zoning, and I think it was something that we wanted to leave in.
That's, that's quite all right, I just wanted to make sure it was addressed.
As an option, I think.
Why, what is the reason for that, leaving it in as an option?
I don't think we just, I don't think we've gotten that far into it, honestly. I think we just left it in as an option. I don't think we got into.
I'm not wasting an opinion, I'm just bringing it up for debate.
We didn't get into a full-on debate about it really either, but I know that there were uses in our previous business park, and I mean, I'm bringing more into this than we discussed in zoning, but I think we determined that, just to leave it in as an option, it gave us options.
If I may.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, there's, there's like three different types of marijuana, you've got the production, the growing, and then the retail sales, so I think the ones that Ryan are speaking to are specific to our current industrial park that have marijuana production and.
Yeah.
Growth as a conditional use. However, I don't believe that we have retail sales as a permitted use currently on our books, so to be consistent, if you do not want to see the retail.
It's not mentioned in here, it falls back to, that's spelled out in here, falls back to.
Yeah, we discussed that provision a lot, like things that weren't specifically mentioned.
I think it calls out here that.
If they're allowed, they're not allowed in our current zoning.
Anything not specifically mentioned goes to current zoning.
Yeah, I.
I'm fine either way.
I don't think it would be, make the area any, I think having marijuana retail probably would not help that area, just off the top of my head.
I think whenever you go through the, the use categories and what's permitted, and then it defines each, each specific use, retail is associated with it, so, and I'll defer to MKSK on this, but if it's, if the industry is evolving, it could be considered as retail from a medical standpoint, or non-medical standpoint, or recreational if you've got, I know liquor stores is mentioned, or, or carryouts, as far as those businesses are allowed, that would, that would probably constitute some of that similar use conversation that we talked about earlier. If you don't want it, I would, I would recommend maybe putting a prohibit, and I'll defer to that.
A vote in November could, could change some of that.
I just want to be intentional, that's, that's okay, I just want to be intentional on this topic, because it's odd, but.
Now, Mr. Green does have a good point in that there is a ballot issue coming up in November that has certain actions that can be taken with respect to zoning out uses that would be retail marijuana, recreational marijuana. So, I think it's a good thing to bear in mind, to be cognizant of, but may require revisiting after that ballot issue.
Okay. Anybody else in section two? Okay, we'll move to section three. My first question is on section three point three, item C, which is talk about subarea five, where it talks about units on deposit. I, I think I'm gonna keep stressing this as much as we can, I, I'd really like to see this area be available for non-retail and non-residential, so, I mean, I know you can't tell at this point, but that, that's my goal for that area, is, is more for.
I have, I have a question, that'll perturb change of vote. I still include you with that. So, there was some conversation about potentially maybe the hope of gaining the land in between, right? In theory, theoretical conversation, that would, you would then bring into this PD district would be your hope?
I, I think that's logical, yes.
So, walking that line, then you would more than likely be looking to use some of the land bank. your, your, uh, unit bank in that area is maybe a thought process that you're going through, right?
Well, I, I think that's entirely possible, but I would say that it's not, you know, that, that property would, you know, when that time comes, there's gonna be a lot more headaches around for me trying to write them, because we're gonna have to, you'll have the ability to, you and your commission and this council to tell us, well, no, we don't want that to happen, or we, we're okay with it. So we could certainly ask that, but we wouldn't have the absolute right to do it.
Would you be, okay, so then to go to your point, could we set a metrics in which in subarea five, we limit the density of the units, even though you have the bank, right? So you have a bank of, it's three hundred and twenty-one is what the residual is, right?
I believe so.
Because that would put that at like, over ten.
I'm not following you, over ten what?
Ten units breaker. That'd be the highest density that they would be having.
Can you, John, can you on the map show the area you're talking about?
Subarea five is. Subarea five is like thirty, is roughly thirty acres.
And just the light blue?
Yeah.
Bottom of the screen, right?
So the, the, the unit bank that they get held to is subarea five's unit bank, that, that end number from the nine hundred to the twelve twenty-one is three twenty-one. And we know that it's probably not realistic that they're gonna try to put ten units breaker on there, I mean, maybe, it could, it would fit. It would just be extremely dense right there.
I'll tell you what, I, I really don't think in subarea five, any residential would really.
Right.
I, but I would like the ability to do the commercial.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wouldn't that be a compromise we could?
I'd be good with that.
Okay, so we'd have to rewrite a little bit, that it's not just purely the mixed use coming over. It would be, it would be the commercial portion of the mixed use, if that makes sense.
Mixed use with no residential allow.
Right.
Yeah, you're gonna find all of us, I think, much more receptive to any, to any business versus housing.
Yeah.
I, I would, I would take that guess.
I guess it didn't register when, because frankly, I, I think the likelihood of, we were just talking, of, of multifamily in subarea five is minimal considering what's going on in the north, so.
Yeah.
It just didn't even occur to me that, but, but if that's a reasonable compromise, we could live with that.
You guys go with that?
I'm talking about.
That was my only questions.
The little one, yeah.
Article three, anybody else with questions in article three?
Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna, yes, we do, we got a power cord for my computer since it's battery's dead, so, apologize.
Anybody with questions in section four, article four?
Well, in three, that.
Okay, go ahead.
Knowing that you're gonna do that, are we, are we gonna try to shoot for rework numbers before the eighth, right?
Yes.
Okay, because I'm like, you'll, they'll have to, they'll do a bunch of reworking in here.
Yeah.
Reworking numbers and then, then.
Well, cause they're gonna have, they'll have the land bank of four fifty and four fifty, and then you would.
I had questions about.
You would be able to divide the other one of how you saw fit, which makes sense. And that's why I didn't, I didn't know if you were gonna ask if they would take the bright side of one and switch it with five, is what I was, that's why I thought you were.
My view of this, I may be wrong, i- i- when you're on Green Chapel there, it would be, cause subarea four there is, you're not going, I mean, you're gonna have some apartments in there, but they're, they're probably not gonna be lining the street. I, I wouldn't wanna see that along any of Green Chapel, and that's.
When you look at the setbacks on Green Chapel, I think they're gonna be closer, they'll be further away on Mankin.
We say along Green, uh, oh, in the, on Green Chapel, yeah, so, uh, to answer your question, Mayor, on subarea three, one, uh, having office in subarea three, we wouldn't be opposed to that. Having subarea three and four, when we originally did our planning, remember, keep, on that portion of the site, there's more topography to the site? And we thought, well, what if it was one zone? The reason why I divided it up is so that we could have a little more teeth to what the plan is and our best guess, so we could have commercial up front, more public, and then transition to the more private area.
And, and that's what I was thinking too, i- if that whole area along Green Chapel, you know, in, in subarea five there, if we did that, it, it would be more blended like subarea four.
Yes, and what we don't know today, which hopefully you know, we'll, we'll know more next year as we get in the planning process and we engage the market is, what, what's the market going to justify, are they three-story or four-story product? Uh, you know, are they breezeway buildings or interior corridor buildings? And there's some homework that needs to be done and outreach with, you know, planners and stakeholders and developers. But, you know, when we say mixed use, we could do first ground floor retail, maybe with apartments or condos above. We just, we, we, we don't know exactly yet, but I think we're saying the same thing, that the general concept from this plan as it is today is that you would transition from public to private throughout four to three. Now, we also wanna be, keep in mind that we're not separating the two uses entirely.
Right.
Conceptually, as we think through connectivity, we'd like to create something a little more walkable, appropriately dense, but, you know, we wanna create a sense of place, and that comes with a critical mass and some energy as well. So those, those are the fun things that we need to work out, and we're committed to kinda rolling up our sleeves with all the stakeholders, MKSK and the city, as well as the market, so.
Okay, the interesting thing about three is you have everything on Duncan Plains that may eventually turn over as well, so.
Yeah.
I got.
It's cool that it goes to more private in the back, but all of a sudden then it may need to turn into something when it gets to Duncan Plains.
Yeah.
Can you look at, I don't know what the land mass is right there in the section of one that's to the west of three, do you see what I'm saying, where you have like almost one that's blocked off right here?
That's rectangle, sorry.
Can you look at the, if you would be able to make this one and make this five? Do you want to change the use?
There, so there, what's not current and shown in this plan right now is a planned utility easement, uh, power easement that runs through the southern portion of subarea one that would essentially create a divide between subarea one and subarea five. Subarea five, we think, hopefully in the short term, we think that could be a good site to get in for applications for one Columbus sites, for example, when companies want twenty or thirty acre sites, like a biopharmaceutical user or somebody like that. Uh, we, we have studied that, I think it was more driven by the, um, utilities that runs on the southern portion, so.
Any more questions in article three? Okay, we'll move to article four, anyone with questions in article four?
Article four talks about the land, the unit bank. So, again, you'll rework some of that based off of that.
Right, right, yeah, well, when they references to five.
Okay, just because obviously the unit bank is gonna get subdivided into three and four.
Right.
Which, which is.
Essentially, those, those units that are in the bank now will eventually get applied to one or the other based on the project and its own merits.
And then, um, I don't know that if you read over it, but if you were to gain, if you were to gain control of more land and bring it into the district, right? Because you're allowed to bring more land, and you can ask to bring more land in the district.
Yeah.
Can they then use that land bank in other areas, depending on what we say?
That would be entirely dependent on what council says.
The area you're referencing, John, for, for point of reference is four point two, I, section A, depository, deposits, undeveloped units from a particular subarea in the unit bank, and hold them there until a development opportunity arises in which rights to the deposit units will be needed in order to reach the applicant's desired density, so that's the piece that you're looking at, to Thad's point. That would have to be decided upon by council at that time for any new brought in areas.
I just wanna make sure that we have the ability as a council, if they are to bring in more land to pivot from forcing twelve hundred units in an area that's a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty acres, if they were to grab more land in an area next to it, and they, the cohesiveness worked out better, that we could then deposit units there instead.
The entitlement, the entitlement as it's approved would give them there, but it would be a conversation if they wanted to amend it, I would imagine, I'll defer to Thad on that.
They could, you know, they could ask for them to be applied to new area, they could ask for or additional units to be applied to a new area, but it would be up to council to say yes, no, or reach some compromise.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Does a unit bank last in perpetuity?
Lasts until such time as all of the units are developed.
Exhausted, that's why I was asking if they bring more land, if.
I mean, that's not a bad thing, it's just a, just a point of reference, I mean.
Okay, any other questions in section four? Article four. Okay, we're gonna move to article five, um, I've got a couple in section three point, or section five point five. Um, the first is an item B where it talks about traffic analysis. We say need for traffic signals roundabouts and, or additional turn lanes, if any on these streets. Can we, can we include possible road improvements in there?
Something like, um, cancel everything with street lights and more, or. I think the answer, I think the general answer is yes, is that what you're trying to capture, the things that go along, yes.
Yes, okay. Um, then a little bit lower than that, we talk about, a couple sections here about private roads. Is this something that council wants as private roads?
I'll, I'll bring it up in my thought process, and I'll defer to Trevor and Thad both on this. Private driveways are always of a concern, um, so I don't wanna get us going in that direction from a development standpoint. Obviously, if it's a private road or private development, it's not on the city to, to maintain and own that, but some levers that we have is we can ensure that it is maintained, and it is properly maintenance. And then from a police enforcement standpoint, if it's a private road, the enforcement of the rules and regulations that exist on that may be a little bit more challenging, so I'm not opposed to private roads as long as they're very specific. But, but a public road is probably more consistent at times, depending on the size and the scale of what you're gonna use that road for is really the determining factor whether I would lean towards a private or a public, and I'll defer to Trevor with that. I'll start with Trevor, if you wanna jump in or wait for Chris.
I, I mean, to play off of Sean's point, yeah, I think it's okay to have private roadways so long as there's agreements that go along with them to ensure that, you know, maintenance, or maintenance is actively conducted, and those phones are being actively collected, whether that's, wherever that's housed. Um, and to make sure that there's, you know, proper legal instruments in place to make sure that there's equitable access for all parties that need involved. Um, however, I will say that in the past, you know, sans the proper legal instruments, making sure that uh, maintenance and all that is conducted, I have seen these come back before and, you know, entities will try to turn a road back to the city, even though it's in deteriorating condition and that sort of thing, so I say that just to, you know, weigh your options, it's not unheard of to utilize private roadways, but I think probably the safest bet is to utilize public roadways generally where possible.
So I want you to wait, cause I want you to react to this. Cause I agree, I agree with you, so, um, I just wanna, the intent here is, um, if you have a significant project with, say, like, say a Google, for instance, internally for security reasons, they're gonna want, you call it a driveway, or, or something private that the general public can't drive on, so that was one thing we were trying to do. The other thing is in a multifamily community, they're typically usually all private internal circulation, you may have one spine of the project that's public, but those are really the two circumstances we were trying to address.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, and I think in that regard, then, um, if you want some additional language to be put in there to maybe even clarify that, I don't have much of an issue with that, because to your point, yeah, if it's a, it would be looked at as a road for a security vehicle or something to drive on, in the case of a data center, but that's not really technically a road that would ever be the purview of the city to maintain anyways, because it's not a public right of way.
It almost becomes a driveway at that point, in my view, and I'm consistent with that thought process.
As long as we can enforce them to maintain it, that's about as far as I would care.
If they, if they choose to not maintain it, and then they can't drive their security vehicles down it, that's really their problem, it's not the city's, because it's not precluding access to that site for trucks or employees or anything like that, so. Um, and I don't have much of an issue either with apartments, that's sort of, that's very common. It, it's just more or less now, a lot of apartment developments are designed to appear more in a block pattern than they used to be, even though they're not really considered empty streets, more or less just access into drunk up parking areas or garages and those sorts of things, so I don't have much of an issue with that.
If you want us to look at the language and.
Maybe just more clarification.
That'd be great, yeah, but, so, I, I think you're gonna have a circumstance, like with the multifamily, you'd have one owner of the project, they're gonna maintain it because it's gonna be in their interest, especially at these rents, keeping them upright, and so, but we'll take a look at that.
Okay, and my final question in area five is in five point five E, where it talks about Clover Valley and Duncan Plains Road. Who is going to pay for the streetscape of that, that area?
So, you know, we have a lot of discussion with the planning commission on these, these sort of traffic related issues, and so, you know, you know, whether the TID includes that in there, you know, and, and we could all say, maybe, you know, the question came up, what if the TID doesn't do what we think they're gonna do, right? So, let me start with that, if they don't do what they, what they're gonna do, or that we think they're going to do, then we're in a situation where if we have a project, we either as the private developer have to say, we've gotta make those improvements in order to make the roadways work for safety reasons and others. Probably we won't have a project that, you know, without, without us making a commitment as the landowners to do that, we, we wouldn't get it. Or we'd be in partnership with the city and, and asking you to contribute, but, you know, you guys aren't exactly flush with money right now, right? So, um, that's totally within your purview and within your discretion to decide if you'd wanna participate. So, our, our, our hope and our best guess is the TID's gonna come through, they have monies appropriated to them through federal government, et cetera. So, that's one thing. Streetscape, the question will be if, if the, if the TID includes that, they would, and is part of their overall package of what they're gonna construct, that would be on them. If it's things like street lights and street trees, that I think would be on us as development occurs.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, can I piggyback off of that? So oftentimes, you build it, but then who the heck's gonna maintain it? It's one of the questions that I would have, obviously, if we're doing a, a decorative streetscape, landscaping a little bit easier, but from a, from a manicuring of the, whether it be a bush, if it's in the, if it's in the right of way, does that get trimmed and maintained in the, in the street area there? My assumption is it would be the private property owner if it's in the easements, um, if it's not, then we need to define that, but the other piece is that that fence, and I talked to Joe, and hopefully he doesn't get too angry with me, uh, from the city of New Albany. And it was relative to the white fences that you have, and some of those white fences exist in New Albany, and then some of them exist through an accord that is not technically in the city of New Albany, and sometimes you could tell the difference because of the maintenance of those. So, a question that I had to, to Joe was, how the heck do you maintain this, this amount of fencing? And you may be able to speak to some of that, maybe not, but I think a good conversation that we need to have is is how are we going to maintain if we do decide a streetscape is gonna have some type of, of hard scape to it as far as a fence or, or any other type of structure that needs to be maintained? We need to build that into a, into a formula and into a metrics that has some form of property owner participation. If memory serves me correctly, I believe Joe had mentioned that, that the collective businesses in the area kind of maintain that, and I can check for, for confirmation on that, or if you can answer that right now, that'd be great.
So, so all of the white fencing, and, um, by the way, it's not worth posing here.
Understood.
I should have referenced that, something else, okay.
Those are all, so, um, and we can make this commitment in this text to form a, what we call a forced and funded property owners association, and, um, especially for the business components of this, but it, it, maybe should include, probably should include everything here. But there would be an, an annual or quarterly assessment charge, and then the association goes out and replaces the fencing as needed, I think they paint it every three years, proportions of it every three years, so we could do that.
Can it be like a CAM, like a common area maintenance type thing?
It's really basically what.
Is that what it is? Okay.
That's what it is, and so, um, I think as far as fencing's concerned, that would be something we'd be willing to take on. I think the street lights and things like that are a city responsibility, is my understanding, but we could check on that.
So, street lights, we have over the last several, several, it was ten years, any type of development that happens, those street lights specifically for, I'll use a subdivision as a reference, cause it's easy. The, the economic piece of this may be a different conversation, but for a subdivision, that's typically charged back to the homeowners association, and I would like to see that continue, uh, just because the areas that we don't have that, sometimes there's a pretty significant bill. And we wanna really redirect the lighting of that area, cause there's different lightings that happen in some areas, so. So, if an area decides to go with a more decorative or, or higher luminosity and things of, of that nature. The other, the other area of town that, that doesn't quite have the spectrum of light that, that's being produced, shouldn't necessarily have to pay for, for the lighting over there. So, from a city standpoint, we'd like to see that trend continue, Jack, you can jump in on that anytime you want.
No, I agree, it's just budget, budget driven and staff driven, yeah, maintain, maintain, keeping those. So we have changed to our latest developments going in, it costs to keep those lights up and running or on that development.
Yeah, and I think, I think maybe I was focused more on the perimeters, and to me, those might be things the city wants to take on for a level of consistency on major perimeters to make sure it's being taken care of at the same level of quality. Internally, that's not a problem, it's something to consider, and I'm not saying we wouldn't do it, but maybe that's something to think about.
Yeah, I just wanna make a comment on the design standards for the streetscape. We just, we don't wanna see the TID or other entities get ahead of Johnstown and end up, you know, adjusting the roads or construction and Johnstown ending up what, what they give you. As opposed to, if you have your designs ready to go, they'll give you what you want, but we just wanna make sure that you guys are getting what you want as well. So, there's, there's time to plan, but.
Not much time.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Sean, you're in communication, you're in those meetings, right?
Just had an email yesterday and today with Bill Lozier about the TID improvements in that area. Had a two hour meeting with Mike from EMHNT. A good half an hour of that discussion was in regards to the streetscape plan last Thursday with MKSK and EMHNT. Really trying to get a, a streetscape plan together, as Jamie put it pretty well, and that is get it out in front of, whatever the TID is going to be utilizing for their plans, knowing that they're going to do their project, but we don't wanna miss the opportunity. And a lot of times, if you get a state project or a county project, they'll pay for the basics, but any extra dressings that you want on it, kind of the responsibility of us sometimes, not all the time, that's a conversation that'll, that'll evidently occur. But, it's always cheaper, not always, but most of the time, it's cheaper to do it in the same timeframe that they're doing the other improvements, rather than wait for that improvement to go through and then come back later on. So, we wanna make sure, as Jamie mentioned, to, to be in sync with what's happening there. We're trying to get ahead of it, EMHNT and MKSK are both working on that diligently, so.
Anybody else with questions in article five? Okay, we're gonna move to sex, article six. I have, I think just one question. It's in section six point six B, screening from adjacent residential uses. It says an opaque fence shall be installed within the required minimum pavement setback, the fence shall be at least eight feet in height. Can we allow for mounding or vegetation instead of fencing there?
I'd like, yeah, I'd like to leave, we could do that, I'd like to have the option for both, and the only reason is I'm worried about being able to fit it with a slope that makes sense, so it doesn't look like a mountain.
And back storm water management.
Okay.
That'll be part of the final design review.
I like having the option as well, in some cases, it may be appropriate to have a fence, but I think in, in other cases, it may be more appropriate to have natural vegetation. For me, I'm a big proponent of the natural vegetation rather than a fence that, back to the maintenance issue, sometimes gets deteriorated, starts to run down. That's just a personal opinion, so.
Just as long as there's the option.
Okay.
Anybody else with questions in article, or yeah, article six?
Can we look at and just screening in generality as land that's not owned or controlled by the applicant, that the screening's all just consistent? So, obviously, it's residential, most of it, it's like just scattered around in there. Some is agricultural and subarea A to A and industrial, but just to just make it cohesive. That way, all our screening's similar, and then can we also look at just, I know this is gonna go down to a master plan, so it's not necessarily like to drive it home at the moment, but the idea of if they're screening there and it's, like, if you look in between five and four, and you're gonna, there'll be mounding, right? And you're gonna have some screening, or I guess in lieu of the fact that it says there could be a density of trees, which is also fine for the screening, but if that changes and gets controlled, it gets removed. And then we start over with like a plan that works for that area.
We talked about that zoning too, we mentioned that, what happens when you go all out for this mounding and, and everything like that, screening? And then, before the buildout, you buy the property?
Though that makes complete sense, conceptually, I think we are in alignment with you guys in the city. I'd like to, before we make any commitments tonight, put a little more thought into it and get back to you, but I think I understand the issue. Of course, there's probably gonna be some one-off conditions that none of us can really imagine, yet. At the last commission meeting, somebody from the public came up and mentioned that, they commended us on our outreach to neighboring properties as well, and we appreciated that. But we're committed that if there's any unique requirements or land next to neighbors, that we're, we wanna work with them, engage with them, and make sure they get the screening that they want as well.
Can we also just visit the conceptual idea, and we can circle back obviously to it, when it talks to streetscapes? If and when, if we're changing any areas of the street, like Mink is a prime example, right? I know that it's not in, all under control of some of the city of Albany, but there are quite a few people I know that are in there that, they're like, if they would just put, if we would just get screening in front of our house, we would be ten times happier than we are right, right this minute. So just some sort of metrics that we can conversate with people that own properties in areas that are gonna be affected, that might not wanna be affected. Just that, that way, they, they have something they can fall back on, if they're like, well, now there's gonna be five hundred cars that drive by me, there used to be five, can I get some sort of screening?
You're talking about in the front of their property.
Correct.
A can of worms.
I, I was gonna say, you're gonna ask them, if we do it that way, then we don't have a cohesive look at that point? If we're gonna, I mean, I agree, they should have some saying, we're gonna have to give them.
You don't have cohesion anyways, because they already on the property.
They're also outside.
And they could do whatever they want. They're outside of the, I'm saying they're outside, but just if they're, if we're going to be, again, this is for the future conversation of, if they're gonna grab, if or when they grab more land.
Okay.
Right, right now, it might not affect that much, but if you were to grab more land and there's a couple pieces that get cut out, right? Just that we have the metrics that they can voice their opinion, at least to come in, we can say, hey, look, we're gonna try to help these folks again.
Cause I know there's a lot of people that I know that live on Mink that have expressed that concern. Hey, if we would've just had, you know, some herbivores down the front of our house, as much as we don't wanna see this road closer to my house, it's, the appetite's a little better, just.
Are, are you, just for clarification, are you specifically talking about areas that would be in a public right of way? Because there, there may be opportunities for us to, to do some type of improvements, anything outside of that right of way?
Correct.
Be kind of a voluntary.
Public right of way.
Situation, okay, so, okay, just so I have notes of what you're looking for.
Yeah, I wanna, I wanna make sure I'm getting the comment correctly too, so, what I'm hearing, you wanna, we wanna establish standard metrics and perhaps sections for mounding requirements and setbacks. Yeah, I think certainly we would love to get that process started and review those with MKSK and the city as well, so that we have some off-the-shelf standards.
I know that it all won't be like fully, we're not gonna like bake in, the point is like some ambiguity, so that we have the resource to say, no, actually, we like this, and we can default from this, and you have the resource to, or, right? Either way, we have push, give and take, but just I know that there could be the opportunity for more development to have. And obviously, looking at the map, there's some little pieces in there, and if, right? Some roads we know in some other areas may change course or direction, or we add roads in, and it might go by somebody's property. They just have some sort of avenue that we can say, hey.
We talked about that, we also talked about making sure that those existing properties don't flood due to the mounding and some of the things that we add in later.
I think they, yeah, the EPA will probably get us on stormwater management. But just, I just wanna make sure that the people that are affected by it, that don't really have much of a voice, get some sort of. Cause I know that was a big issue that a lot of people there had, and they felt like, they're like, oh, we're getting overlooked. And like, yeah, I mean, that makes sense, you get a couple pine trees in your.
I appreciate that, we'll definitely put some more thought into that next time. And we'll say, right before Aaron and Aaron presented, we cut about a half a dozen slides on mounding and stuff.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We thought the presentation was long enough, so, yeah.
Anybody else in subsections, or section six?
I got one question.
Yes, ma'am.
When you have the elimination, you have your elimination setbacks, and give me an example of why, and what, what would do that?
I think it's what Mr. Merriman was kinda talking about, and if, let's take, let's just take the western boundary of subarea four right there. And say that the property next to it that's not in red or yellow, it's like, looks like a green area, it's an area.
Yeah.
If that were acquired and it came under common ownership, there'd really be no need for that setback anymore. And so that was intended to say if, if we acquire that and zone it into a category that's compatible, so it's the same use. So we'd add to the PUD and add that in, then the setback would go away, because we're the only ones affected by that setback.
Okay, but really no other area would that come into?
Really, really, where any, there's any perimeter where there's land that could later be acquired.
We could do it in a couple of different places.
What section?
It's G, so, I mean, it just says basically in the event that a parcel located within this subarea or an adjacent parcel located within and outside, or outside this PD district, come under common ownership or control, are zoned to allow compatible non-residential uses, and three are combined in a single parcel. And my minimum pavement and building setbacks is set forth in section six point three. As they apply to common property lines shall no longer apply with respect to this parcel.
Right, and so it's akin to, if you were in, say you were gonna build a house and you were fortunate enough to be able to buy two lots next to each other, you might wanna position your house on that second one.
In the middle, yeah, right.
You're the only one to be affected by that setback or anything like that, it's the same concept.
Okay. All right, thanks, thank you.
Anyone else in article six? Okay, moving to article seven, I have two questions in here. The first is in section seven point six C two, where it talks about wall finish materials. And this also pertains to section eight point six. Where we talk about vinyl shall be permitted as primary, should vinyl only be permitted as a secondary?
So we did talk about this, cause I wanted to eliminate vinyl altogether. Because we've done that elsewhere in the city, and I think what we came down to was that there are some standards of vinyl that may work in some areas. Like a standing seam type, something that looks a little classier.
Vinyl isn't what it used to be.
Yes, yes, and that's, that's kinda, no, but I've, I've made the comment first, let's get rid of it altogether.
Vertical vinyl is a, is a much cleaner finish than what we're used to seeing with the lap, chip lap kind of look.
And I, I think, I think that we've also found with like, you know, hardy plank used to be the thing that everybody wanted, right? And as it ages, it becomes.
It's not fun to work with.
Yeah, so, that's what we're trying, trying to do.
I think that.
That would be, that would also be part of the final approval of the.
Right, right, so you're gonna get a.
We have a check.
If you show up with double five Dutch lap in vinyl, I probably will say that.
In section seven point nine D two, parking areas, talks about sixty percent opacity, PC capacity, can this be increased?
Was that for the screening of, or like, use of parking areas in the street, is that what that was?
Yes. Section seven point nine D two.
I think we'll look at that, but the situation I was thinking of when I wrote this was maybe sort of a wrought iron fence with some planting, some shrubbery behind it, and, you know, that would look maybe we want in some instances. But sixty percent was a little bit arbitrary number, so we'll look at it and see if we can bump it up.
One issue that, we talked about that, and one issue that was called out was policing, and I don't know if that becomes an issue at all, being able to see in the parking lots or things like that. That was a call out that came up, sorry to put you on the spot, but that was something that came up in zoning, because we talked about that, we've talked about our, screening our parking lots a lot.
Anybody else in section D?
Yep.
Or section seven?
This'll kinda go with Jack, what E, you have pedestrian circulation, and it says, an eight foot wide asphalt leisure trail, is there any appetite that we could look at that? Almost how the city of Westerville looks at theirs, they have a five on one and an eight on the other, the eight's built to the standard that you could drive an emergency vehicle if needed on it, in case you have a road blockage, just, just a thought.
Yeah, dude, I think, yeah, the last commission meeting, we talked about potentially changing the language to become ADA accessible as well.
I was gonna mention that.
Well, actually, you know what, I don't even know if it was ours, I think it was the applicant ahead of us for their sidewalk.
I think, and I brought it up for years too, because we said, five feet is today's ADA, but we, you know, if this is a ten year buildout.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was for sidewalks, yeah, cause leisure trail, if you're eight feet, I mean, you're probably ADA.
So, right, right now, we have commitments to the eight foot leisure trail on all of the perimeter streets, right? And then I think we have some, maybe one or two primary streets, like for instance, coming into subarea four, we say, one side will be a leisure path of eight foot, the other side will be a five foot sidewalk.
Yeah, so I was just looking at like, could we look, could we entertain the idea of looking at when we construct the leisure trail, looking at it in a way that you could get? It's like in Westerville, if you go down Cleveland Avenue, they have an eight foot on one side, and I believe the other side's a five, and it's, it's created in such a way that if the road were to get blocked, they can run a truck down it. Or if they were.
Is that an asphalt on both sides?
I think it's concrete on both sides, so. But, I, I mean, asphalt would be easier, that's why.
I don't know.
It's S, or it's concrete both.
And is it concrete both?
For most of it, but I would just look as, as a metrics of, for future for later.
About what we wanted things to look like, we referenced that area a lot. One other thing with ADA, when we have a grade, which we probably will in this area, if there has to be a handrail of some kind, we would definitely like to take a look at. That was some, I forgot to say in zoning.
So I'll jump in.
Inside joke.
Good point.
I don't know how inside it is.
There's a difference between sidewalk and leisure trail, and it's actually important, and I'll defer to Thad to look all the details or Trevor up. But if it's a leisure trail, you don't necessarily have to meet like all these ADAs, and then you don't have to have handrails and everything else. Once it becomes a sidewalk, is whenever you have to meet the, if you don't meet the grade of the existing road and it, and you take a different path, then you have to have handrails, as long as you're consistent with the grade, and then you don't. So, having a leisure trail gives you some, some maneuverability around probably some of the aesthetics that may not be desirable, so I would lean into leisure trails, waiting for anybody to tell me no, so.
They're saying real, we just wanna have a conversation.
So, what, what define, like, where do you have to, where can you say, if this is a leisure trail, when can you say, well, this is definitely a sidewalk?
Great question, so that I'd have to do some more digging into, but I know like the, in Johnstown, the, the trail that kinda goes across Raccoon Creek.
Yeah.
And, and up to Bigelow Drive, it's considered a leisure trail, so we didn't, we didn't necessarily have to have.
Up to where, I'm sorry?
Uh, Bigelow Drive.
Okay.
So, more of a leisure trail, a lot wider. So, there's, there's different qualifications and different metrics and different, different items that are addressed whenever you do a leisure trail versus a sidewalk.
Obviously, the stuff in front of McDonald's is a sidewalk, because we had to put those.
Well, some of it, I won't, I won't go down that road right now, but you, there, you didn't need all the handrail. But you had to have some, is what I'll say, and I'll leave it at that, so.
Gotcha. That was my question.
How about an issue you don't wanna step into it?
Nope.
Just bobbing weed, Jamie.
No, I appreciate, they're, they're all good thoughts, whether we get a truck down or not. We wanna roll up our sleeves and figure out the circulation, the connection. One thing that we need to work with Johnstown and MKSK is, we establish trail standards throughout Johnstown, and how is this standard maybe set of precedence throughout Johnstown? And those are, those are conversations that I think we need to study designs together, maybe it'll probably be an iterative process with MKSK. We'll look at these, uh, Westerville, New Albany, all over the country, so I think, and figure out the trade offs. Maybe there's appropriate sections to have it wider, that's why, I just don't have any answer.
I was just, I know that the, the eight foot is wide enough, it was more so just the like metrics and how it's built, so that we can say that for sure, if like we need, if it needs to have. Right, right, how much you're putting in, which obviously is a cost change, it also maintenance, the maintenance goes down if it has a better base. But, just to look at it, because again, it will set, if we're going to do it as a large trail system, it doesn't obviously have to be cer- in certain areas, but on like a main road, if you get, we just had a jackknife at, on three ten the other day, I think at Clover Valley, and it blocked the road, so I'm like, if an emergency vehicle has an access point to get around six or seven or eight cars, it'd be nice. The next one was just. The next one was just.
It's a good point.
When we go to definitions and we're in seven point one zero parkland and open space.
I got one before you. Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Uh, H under seven point O, I believe, seven point O. Trash receptacle is kind of a boring point, but I'd like to make sure that the concrete is poured to the right width and depth in front of the receptacle. So that we don't end up with sink marks in the asphalt, which is what typically happens with developers. They just pave right up to it. And then the truck over the years, you end up with tire marks from when they lift the weight up on the front of that truck.
Like a general statement.
Does code require that?
Yeah, we have some provisions in our current code that I, I believe require parking lots to have established dumpster enclosure areas as well as loading areas in the concrete thickness in those. I believe there is some requirement.
Can we, um, in the term open space, can we put in the definition that it's not to include the stream corridor protection zone and/or wetland? And/or can we look at flood plains too? Just that way, from a, from a standpoint of green space, I know that, or open space, I know that sometimes people look at a circular loop around and I just don't want to see that be like, oh, and then all of our open spaces over here and it's this protective.
I was going to say that was.
Seven, seven.
Point one O.
Point one O.
I think we can expand on the definition of open space.
I think that's, yeah, that's fine. We made that point.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that it's not to include that. Cause we have the stream corridor protection zone, which is defined. And then.
Yeah.
Wetlands or flood plain. Just that way we don't get into the area of somebody says, well, I met all the green space or, or open space requirements.
Space I couldn't develop anyhow.
And a space that you couldn't develop anyways.
In our current code, I believe we have some provision in there that states it has to be usable land in order for it to be considered, uh, at, uh, a calculatable open space.
That was a change we made in zoning this year.
I just want to make sure that it is in where it's spelled out in here, that it's cohesive. Cause though we all know that the definition is what we get.
Concept we understand, we need to wordsmith it and see what.
If it works.
Anything else in article seven?
I, I just got to clarify. So you have said in the past with parkland, in lieu of park, in lieu of parkland, you had said you would want to pay a fee or pay.
That they could.
Could.
You could. I, I was under the, under, well.
Yeah, and I, we don't necessarily want to do anything right now. We don't.
I get it, but you, you have put that on the table, correct?
Only because it's in the code.
Okay.
And I think to us, the discussion needs to be if, if it makes sense to be incorporated into our plan. That's the starting point and we have to do that. If you guys or we think that there's another way to do it offsite through a fee, we're open.
Okay, all right.
We wrote it into the code for the exact purpose of, in some cases where this is going to be laid out.
Oh, I understand. I understand why.
From a city perspective, we might not want that to be.
I, I agree.
Very good. I think the, the concern or the, the question is, what's that fee in lieu of equal to? When's that defined? If we're buying parkland in year eight versus year two, does that parkland cost the same? Is it available? You know, it's just want to make sure that we actually provide parkland to the community. Not have money to buy land that's not available or unaffordable or.
I think the metrics.
A drive to get to.
The metrics is already defined.
It starts at forty-five thousand an acre and then it goes up seven percent, I think, each year after that.
So it's a, it's a defined metrics that we don't have to accept.
Yeah.
The, not the metrics. We don't have to accept the payment in lieu of.
Right.
Is the key. So like they can't just come to us and they're like, we're not doing parkland anymore. Here's money. It has to be agreed upon by, with the city. That's.
I believe it's, it's not all or nothing either.
Yeah.
I would just, that was my next question was.
It is defined, but just what's the metrics used and how viable are they?
Situation where we bring in a plan and it shows a lot of open space. And you may say, well, yeah, maybe we want the money. There's another, and then we say, well, maybe, maybe we could shrink it because we think this is a valuable amenity for our, you know, so that's going to be.
Aesthetically wise, right? Got it. Okay.
That's good.
Anybody else in article seven? Okay, move into article eight. I have two. These are my last two. So. Section eight point three, design intent. Um, we state in this design intent, mixes of any permitted use types within the same building are permissible. Could we require no residential on the first floor of a mixed use building?
Can you repeat that?
Would like to require no residential on the first floor of a mixed use building.
Probably, yeah, prohibit residential on the ground floor. There are scenarios where I've done projects where those are very desirable units to walk out, especially if people have pets.
If, if it's a mixed use.
What excuse?
Yeah. If it's multifamily, you're allowed, but only on a mixed use. So it would be having office or something above it. And then the first floor would be residential. Just.
Yeah.
I, I've seen cases in Columbus where it's weird and I see Trevor walking up. So I don't know if he's got anything to add to that or not.
Just, yeah, just very quickly, I, I think you, I mean, as city council, yes, you could require that. However, I would caution you to react to that too quickly because there's a lot of situations, to Jamie's point, where you might have an L shaped building. And on the first floor, on one street, you want commercial, that's part of your commercial frontage, your, the new street they're creating. On the other side of that L, you're starting to create a residential streak where you may want some front doors on that for, on the street level. So you can walk out down a few steps and you're right.
Or, or front and back depending on how the corridors.
Compromised to say that there's no residential units facing the street. Whereas if you have depth, you could have something on the back or the L shape which go away. I think what we're trying to avoid is you walk in, you got restaurant, business, business, residential, residential, residential or something.
I think you're going to use the metrics of denying them at their, at their last plan. Because you might run into the situation too, because some of these can be three units. This is the only reason why I'm going to go here is if you have a three unit and it's stating that they can have so much above grade square footage, you're going to have like a brownstone look is what I, my assumption is you're going to get. So if you look at like Market Street in New Albany, you have mixed uses thrown in there. And on one side, you have business, on the other side, they have their condos or townhomes or freestanding, some are freestanding. And you have like all this mixed use, which is going to be defined as mixed use, but the building itself is different. So like each little one can be different. And I don't want to see us get trapped into where we're like calling mixed use like one pot where it's really the mixed use is allowing for different uses.
Okay with all, I just want to make sure that we're on the same page so that we don't get through this whole process. And then there's something that's built into the program. We don't like that. And then throws everything up.
Cause I think the ambiguity of allowing us to not have it all in there later is like, is our asset. But then later say like, nope. Whereas if we bake it in, then we're, we're forced to do it.
We can fix it in the end if we don't like it.
Yeah, this, this is something that we talked about a lot, Ryan, at the commission. Architecture is very subjective, which plays in your favor, not in ours, right? Because the more certainty on our side, the better. But, um, I feel, I feel like we'll work it out at the next stage.
Okay. Um, my last question's in section eight point eight, um, L R I, can't see what I wrote. Traffic analysis, uh, where a traffic signal or additional turn lanes are warranted. Can we add wording which would include roundabouts or any other necessary roadway improvements deemed appropriate by this traffic statement? That were just not handicapped.
Sure, sure.
Just by. Okay. Anybody else in article eight?
Very good with the setbacks there.
I think that.
I know we talked about setbacks a little bit.
I think.
Where was that? Which one you referring to?
So eight point seven.
Sixty-four.
Be on page sixty-four of eighty-one.
If I may, uh, I'll jump in. So I think this is something that, that MKSK and EMHNT and, and, and New Albany company and myself are all kind of working on at this moment, defining the street tree. Obviously the visual, how much room is, is needed in order for that particular street scape to, to be successful. So some of these, some of these parameters that are in here, um, are going to be dictated by that street scape that hasn't yet been fully defined. So if I can, I'd like to punt at least this week and then just.
I think the other thing we have to think about too, whereas when we looked at setbacks in other areas of our town, we already have kind of a build out. Some of this is not built out yet. And I don't think that we don't, you don't know. So sub area four is a good example. You don't know exactly what like other sides or sub area three in certain areas where you have residential houses now, what they're going to look like in four or five years when they get to the building of this. So to say our setback should be twenty-five feet and then the other side doesn't mirror it. And now you're making the cohesiveness off can get a little, we might not have say over that area is what I'm saying.
Setbacks are tough in this, but if you look at like the main roads, like Mink, Green Chapel.
Yeah, but what are those going to look like in five years? You're basing it based off of what, what it looks like now.
You know what Green Chapel is going to look like by now, but, um, you can tell if you're twenty feet, twenty-five, fifty feet off the road. You know where you're going to be as far as at least what the road's going to look like. So you know where your buildings will be. And I'm, I'm not saying either way. I already had this debate. So I'm just asking you guys if you're.
The only thought I agree and, and our team has on Green Chapel is we, we think having a large, this, these are minimums on the one.
Right.
Having a larger setback required, the size of the buildings on the other side of the street. And compared to ours, they're, they're going to be a lot taller. We think by bringing, by having the ability to bring the buildings closer, it sort of feels a little better. Um, given what's going to be across the street. So that's the only one where we're really kind of like, for sure, we want to stick with that if we can. And the others, you know, we're, we're open to the.
No, I apologize. When you, I didn't have a chance to scroll to it. I, when you mentioned setbacks, I thought you were specific to street, but this is with buildings. But it does have the same crossover with, with the streetscape, but specifically more to the buildings. Yeah, I'll defer to what you're saying there.
You may not know what you're going to build, but we can at least semi define the look of the neighborhood is what, is all I'm saying.
Anybody else in section eight? Okay, move into article nine. Any questions? Article nine.
We'll obviously have to make some changes relating to the earlier conversation.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Family there.
Okay. Article ten. And then article eleven. Any questions?
Wait a minute. Sorry, crank it back for one second.
Nope, you're passed. Go ahead. Go ahead.
What, what was that?
You can go ahead. I said you're passed.
Thanks. Um, when we talked about, and that might've been one of the conversations, Ryan, when you guys were planning zoning was with hotels. There was, was there ever talk about none of them had, um, they were, none of them had outside entrance?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's, that's in there.
It is in there. Okay. Where's that at?
The hallways.
It's in the front.
I couldn't find it.
Defines the hallway.
I must've missed it.
It's in the beginning where it says that all entry into rooms will be interior.
Yeah.
No motels.
Yeah, exactly. All right.
Motels is prohibited use.
Right. And so I wanted to make sure there's a clear definition of that. We don't want that either. We want everything to be interior entry.
Okay. All right.
It's on page eight.
It, thank you. I was looking. I just couldn't see it. Um.
It's amazing.
And then, um, you have, you have prohibited use funeral homes. And then you have funeral homes here.
I'll do it.
Wait a minute. You, wait a minute. If I go back to, um, go back to where's prohibited use at, which, which.
So Ryan specifically asked for funeral homes to be taken out. So I did. If I missed it somewhere else.
It's under prohibited use in here. I think I saw funeral homes as under prohibited.
I'll, I'll want to check for it and see if I missed.
Yeah.
Okay.
It is page ten. It's the last word on page ten.
It's not a prohibited use, so.
You're getting empty nesters too.
That was, that was my, that was it. I'm done.
Okay. Anybody else for section ten or eleven? Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to jump back. Briefly.
You're not allowed.
They're killing me.
These should be easy ones, but I just want to make sure. Uh, we're going to go to page seven.
Wow.
Yes. Well, we got ahead of it before we got to, which would be section, uh, two, three, I believe. Yes. Uh, under G, uh, I, 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 and anywhere else it appears. I'd like drive-throughs to be a conditional.
Oh, yeah.
Something that we could have a lot of control over to make sure we don't end up.
That's fair.
Yep.
Looking at specific pharmacies and drugstores.
Yes. Well, that's, that's caught out there, but there's other places where drive-throughs have popped in.
I think Grand, Grandview is conditional.
Anywhere, yeah. Anywhere there's a drive-through, it should be conditional. Uh. Let's see here. Manufacturing, I'm, I'm still on that same two, three. I'm backing up to D, manufacturing production industrial uses. I want to make sure that, or this could go under prohibitive usage. I don't want any animal processing of any kind. Slaughter, haluses, renderies, any, anything of that sort. Uh, I don't think that belongs anywhere in any of this development anywhere. I don't think it would, but.
Taxidermy?
All right. And then the last ones are still in section two, three. We're going to jump up to, this is just for clarity, B, uh, provision seven. Public, quasi-public or private utility services. Uh, it doesn't speak directly to it, but I want to make sure all water and sewer provided and able to operate is provided by the city of Johnstown. No, no private entities, no anything. It just, and then that pops up again under D six, where it says essential services. Mentions electric substation, water and sanitary sewer. Infrastructure is fine, but facilities, unless you're considering a pump station facility or some type of holding facility is one thing. But I don't want any outside provider of water or sewer to be, uh, eligible to be built at any time. And it doesn't say this, but there's a big concern on this. Um, I'm backing up again. It's going to be section two, three, B, uh, eight, V, I, I, I. It talks about park and ride facilities, which are fine, but I want to make sure there's a call. There, there are no bus stations.
Yeah.
No, no, no collection points.
No, that was, that was something, well, yeah.
I just want to say.
That came up it.
That's something that I brought up because I said, I don't even know if we want.
It's going to be something that the area needs, but I certainly don't want it necessarily, uh, in this development or in Johnstown as a general factor because of what comes with it. We're not situated to manage that.
Just, just quickly, we work a lot with the Central Ohio Transit Authority and any of their park and rides, especially destination endpoints, which is assuming what anything in the future would be here in Johnstown. They generally like to have some sort of facility. Generally it's like bathrooms, covered waiting area, something at least to get people that are doing park and ride.
That could, that could be a New Albany in my opinion.
Okay, I'm just, I'm.
They're, they're much, they're much better situated to manage that. It all, we don't, we don't.
It could be across the street.
We don't.
Yeah, we don't need a park and ride.
Park and ride is okay.
Parking ride's fine. You know, a, a bus station with the cupboard, you know, and you got the nice little place to stay out of the rain. That's one thing. But bathroom facilities, uh, vending machine, any of that stuff that creates a collection point for potential use that we don't find desirable. Uh, that's, that's a solid no for me.
I went further in zoning to say no, no public transportation of any kind. And I questioned the.
I'll leave it to zoning to make a recommendation on that. But I mean.
Well, we did. It's here now. But I think, yeah, park and ride, I think was the only thing that survived us. Um, and I'll take it or leave it.
They have a park and ride right next to, um, Facebook and it's, it's like probably a fifty lot, I think. It has nothing.
I think there's going to be plenty of.
My, my big concern is infrastructure that provides shelter, restroom facilities, closed doors that are.
Yeah, we don't.
Bus station, a stopping point.
Right.
Uh, that's safety and service that there's all kinds of things that come with that that I don't, we're not, we're not the place to need to.
If I, if I could, uh, and I see exactly where you're going, um, but I would be nervous if I didn't bring up something and Trevor's just itching and I can tell. I agree with everything you're saying. And if there's a way to facilitate some type of mobile transient that alleviates your concerns, I would say you may want to identify because the, the, the environment that you're having there is, is younger professionals, workforce. Um, I know this sounds crazy, but if you do some of the research on it, some of these younger demographics, they don't, they don't get cars anymore. They get Ubers. They literally are, are carless. So if that's a demographic base, that, it's a different situation than what I, I see your element. And I don't want that either. But sometimes it produces, uh, an amenity that's very attractive to those young professionals. I was in Chandler, Arizona, and, and their public transportation system is a little bit different, but you had a tremendous amount of young professionals in that area. And like, all of those things you may want to have on the table as an option. But if you can work around the wording to make sure that you get what you want.
Conditional use.
Conditionally.
And maybe, and maybe that's the way to go.
Say, that's a great idea.
That's the easiest way to go.
Conditional use just makes it so that it's.
That's fine.
Any other transit.
And empty nesters are in the same situation. They're, they're not. I'm a guy that likes to get my car and I like to drive and I like to have that control, but there is, there is an aging population and there's.
A lot of poets providing transportation. My biggest concern. A lot of poets providing transportation, my biggest concern is that becomes a hub, it becomes, it becomes the central station location, and then we're left to manage it.
I am a hundred percent in agreement.
Not that anyone in those areas would want that.
Right.
I mean, plans aren't for today and tomorrow, plans are for year fifteen, year twenty.
I mean, one thing we could add is bike share, those scooter things, things like that, if you want that, I'm cool with that, but. I don't need code.
I think a conditional use, that Mr. mentioned is fantastic ability.
We'll try to put some other parameters on it too, that's really not, I think it's important too, but it's not.
I don't think, I don't think it's eminent, but.
I think if you leave any conditional, it gives you the position to move later when something that we don't know about now.
I'm okay with it, I'm okay.
Like a, like a Toro, like if the Toro comes out with like a car station or something, you can say, oh, yeah, cool, that can be here, but.
I'm sorry.
We're waiting for you.
Okay, so, is everyone's questions with this been answered then for tonight, or at least discussed? Okay, so we can continue to move on. Um, I'll open it to any public that wants to ask any questions tonight.
You lost a lot to attrition.
It's only bad when you're online.
Yes, family, come up.
Andrew. Uh, I don't know if this was just kind of a hypothetical, but it sounded like there was a eight-foot trail that would be going around all the. Basically around the triangle, how that affects people who aren't part of the.
It would only be in the area they own.
Right, it wouldn't go everywhere that is not their land, you wouldn't see it, so it would go.
So it would go down Green Chapel and then stop and take that up?
If they develop that area, yes.
Can I jump in?
Yep.
Sure.
Okay, so with the T I D and the E M A T T and the K S K conversations, I don't, I don't wanna, I don't wanna have to make you all pull that back later, so. I would say when we're looking at, at the Duncan Plains, that obviously have that millions of dollars that were dedicated from the state of Ohio, uh, and Clover Valley, I'll, I'll throw those two in there, cuz I know there's, there's county funds that are associated with it. So there's gonna be some improvements that are happening there, piggybacking on what they're doing is the appropriate time to put in leisure trails and things like that, so. We wouldn't wanna paint ourselves into a box to where we were just doing streets gates along here, uh, or along here. There may be an opportunity, and there may not be, a lot of this is gonna depend on the finance, finances of it, um, and everything else, so if there is the option. I would say that it would only happen in the right way, um, so it wouldn't happen necessarily on the private property, but there could be a leisure trail that could exist on the Duncan Plains, whether it be north or south, wherever it was determined. Um, I know at the very minimum right now, we're looking at the right-of-way situation and making sure that this is dedicated enough right-of-way for what we're looking to do.
Specific to the applicant in the P D district only, their only responsibility is to their section, does that make sense? He is definitely walking in a, down a path that is walking parallel to the one that we're talking about, and it does make sense what he's saying, where eventually, I would assume that through right-of-ways. You wanna cohesive look everywhere from a city standpoint, but for this document specifically in the applicant, it's only, they're only tied to. What they own and their responsibility.
Most of the leisure path is dedicated off of the roads, so I believe like Green Chapel Road, New Albany owns that road, they're gonna have leisure path, I believe, on one or both sides of the road, I don't know if M K S K knows that answer, or if Mister Underhill does, but. Um, that was a question I was gonna ask earlier, whenever, um, Mister Merriman was asking about, uh, emergency services, being able to utilize those, uh, I don't know if. They'll be on one side or they'll be on both, but I know it'll be at least one side, I just don't know which for, uh, Green Chapel Road.
And and with this transportation shrep that we're getting ready to do from a connectivity standpoint, there, there may be some participation from the developer. To be doing trails that are off-site in order to have that connectivity, like I said, I I bring this up, I don't wanna, I don't wanna paint anybody into a box and you make a commitment and say, there's not gonna be a leisure trail. In the easements, uh, or in the public right-of-way, and then all of a sudden, a year from now, my god, she's got a leisure trail.
Appreciate that.
Albeit on the public right-of-way outside of the property, but I I don't want, I don't wanna see you guys get into a situation where you're not communicating clearly.
Build out of this project to make the leisure trail interesting, because if you made everything yellow with a leisure trail today, it's gonna be, get surrounded within twenty years, so.
There's definitely a leisure trail on the south side of Green Chapel. That I do know, so, and I I guess kind of along with that, then, if there is a, you know, um, kind of, you know, if we're gonna create some sort of streetscape look or whatever, if there is fencing. Does that become a part of, you know, would that go across the properties also that are not, not before, I guess, I don't know.
No, no, I I know what you mean.
Become the, the property owner's responsibility, or do you do some sort of?
The, the only thing I would do, and and I'm not gonna give you an answer that is gonna be definitive, but I would say if you look at New Albany. Uh, for, for references, obviously a similar development company or the same development company, um, there's houses that have been there for quite a while that, that kind of the fences don't. Don't, don't cross their property, uh, and then it picks up at the other parts of it, uh, like I said, I just don't wanna paint into a box where the city takes on a project and says, we're gonna have a walking trail or a leisure trail. Uh, because it's gotta connect to this park and and say, I'm sorry, later on, I'd rather just tell you right now that, I would say that's still a possibility, but if you look at the model that's been utilized in New Albany. That's probably what you're gonna see more of, but I don't wanna take it off the table.
Okay, I've just, I guess I've never paid attention to New Albany, to see if there's any points, faces.
Is that, is that accurate, I mean?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
And this might be off topic, but if I. Well, I, this, I'll ask the city about this, forget it, okay, that's it.
Any other citizen comments tonight? Awesome, so, this was the initial reading of this ordinance, um, it will come back on the agenda in, what? On the eighth of November, so.
It's a Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday. So that will be the second reading, and when council's allowed to take a vote on it, if we desire, so that was the first reading of that, we are gonna move to ordinance twenty twenty-three. Um, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three is an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a compensation agreement between the city of Johnstown and the Johnstown Monroe Local School District. I will let Mister Stainer delve into this one, but this is something that we have been working on with the school district for months, um, this is a needed item if we're gonna do any kind of development like we are, so, Mister Stainer?
Sure, so, it's in your packet, if you, if you had a chance to read it, um, and you have questions, feel free to ask those, I won't get too far into the weeds with this. I'll just give you a boilerplate explanation, so this is a compensation agreement, we've talked about these a little bit in council, we have C R As, uh, that, uh. That incentivize development in that particular area, um, you, you can do a compensation agreement to where the school, uh, has the ability to be compensated for any revenues that they would lose. Uh, doesn't mean they're always made whole, but, uh, at least there is some portion or some revenue that's still generated to the school. Like I said, I don't wanna overcomplicate this, we really use the model that exists between the city of New Albany. Their schools as well as the current model that's used with Johnstown schools, the city of New Albany, or the, the, the development company, so. Really what we're modeling here and doing is effectively already in existence, but just kind of a copy, not exactly a carbon copy, but a copy of what the agreement exists between. New Albany and and the local school district, so this, this piece is the compensation, this talks about the financial piece, um, that gets reimbursed to the schools, the other one is. A three-party part of that, it's getting late in the night, so try to, try to boil this down so I don't overexplain it, but the other piece is between. Monroe Local School District, um, the city of Johnstown, and also the land holding company, so trying to take care of both these in the same swath.
You talk about the second ordinance?
Yep. And what, this one is between the three parties, so you got Johnstown Land Company, Johnstown Monroe Local School District, and the city of Johnstown, so. I don't wanna overcomplicate it, if you have questions, I'll be more than welcome to answer them.
These, these were the key to New Albany being able to develop, um, as well as they have with bringing businesses in, um, that these agreements were struck ahead of time. So that businesses could come in, it didn't have to go to council and, um, issues with each one, so this allows us to be able to market ourselves to companies that may wanna come in, we have this agreement with the schools, they don't have to worry about obtaining this. So this is, it's really a proactive move by us to get this done, to make ourselves more marketable to companies that are coming in, so. Approved by the board? Yes, sir.
I was just gonna ask if I could add one additional item of information, is that the way that the C R A exemption works is it does not exempt the current value of land. The only thing it exempts is the value of a new structure.
Right.
Increased value of land is not exempted by the C R A. It would be exempted by the H I F, because of the way this T I F is structured, the schools would get their whole portion of that increased land value. So, um, just so that, I'm sure council is clear, but just so any members of the public are clear, any of these agreements do not result in less money for the school, uh, than what they have now.
Has the school board approved this?
Yes.
Yeah, good point, uh, so the school board will be looking, they haven't approved it, but they'll be looking at this legislation for them as well, theirs happens to go a little bit differently, uh, from a format. Think they'll be doing theirs through a legis, or, I'm sorry, through a resolution, uh, with our particular charter, the way it's laid out, anything that's, that's in a, a long-term agreement perpetuity. Needs to go through the ordinance process, so rather than us doing a resolution in one swoop, um, this one, we decided to go through the ordinance process because of some of the language that's in our charter, so. School district, I believe, is having this on their agenda at the next school district, um, meeting, which off the top of my head, I can't remember when that is, thirteenth, thank you. November thirteenth, so.
Does this go through finance, or no?
No.
No, okay.
It's been discussed.
It's been discussed.
We discussed it.
I don't know if you guys talked about it at all yet, or.
We discussed it, the general principles, okay.
Yeah, absolutely, I, we were instructed to, to use the model of New Albany and and basically come up with a similar document, and so that's, that's the task that we've done. Uh, there is, I wanna say some urgency to this, we're really trying to get these things all synchronized, so that way, uh, as Donnie mentioned, Mayor mentioned. It has all these secret sauce recipes that are available to, to see that development be successful, and what I mean by development, that's that economic piece, uh, these are really important and critical. So that way, you're not going to a negotiation table with the school district, uh, anything over seventy-five percent, you have to get school district approval through a C R A, so we really wanna have that fully baked. Whenever a company is looking to locate here, we can check that box, it's, it's not an issue, same thing with T I F agreements and all those, those are sometimes anchors in the, in the process. And speed to market is incredibly important, um, specifically with, with the intel and the speed of which development is happening around there. This is, this is a marketing piece, and if we're going to get ahead of it, this is one of those items that we've gotta get, we've gotta get done quickly, N C As are gonna be another piece that you're gonna see relatively shortly. To put just another financial tool out there that we're gonna be working through, so be ready for that.
Okay, so again, this is ordinance twenty twenty, twenty, twenty-three, and this was the first reading of it. We're gonna move to ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-three, so we have the first reading of that one, an ordinance authorizing the city manager enter, enter into a development incentives agreement between the city of Johnstown. And the Johnstown Monroe Local School District, again, Sean explained, or, um, Mister Stainer explained this one a moment ago, uh, so this is just another piece of this puzzle. And again, this is the first reading, it will come back up on November eighth. Um, does council have any questions on either of these ordinances? None, okay.
Just, just as a note, you will see on the next document, correct me if I'm wrong, the, it'll say that Johnstown Land Company LLC, rather than Johnstown Company, that was finalized today, so. As I know, that's the only change that's gonna be coming down the line, absolutely.
I'll speak on this, Mr. Werr party to it, um, I think that this, we, we did meet with the school districts late, late last week. With Doctor Ryan, your, their attorney, I'm expecting a few comments from them, but not any of substance, but more clean, happy clarification, so there may be some of that, I haven't received those, I don't know if you have.
I have not either.
So that might be the only other thing, but not, not anything of substance, I'm told, so.
Um, so we'll move to other business. Does anyone on this side of the table have anything for other business tonight?
It's late, but I have one.
Yes, sir.
This came up in rules committee, uh, it goes to the live streaming of our council meetings, uh, and the, the point and counterpoint was live streaming, transparency, immediate access to information, community participation. But on the other side, does that prevent folks from actually coming and joining us in, to where we could have conversations that are more thorough, more on topic, more concise and clear? Uh, so, consider that, uh, one option was, you know, we, we record it, make it available the next day, so nothing's lost as far as visibility and transparency, would that, would that be an incentive for people to come and participate? To where we could have real back and forth versus maybe hearing a little bit of a conversation and then taking what bits and pieces they have out and and going from there. Uh, I don't think there was any determination in the group, I just thought of bringing it up for the whole council to consider, uh, with the idea always being transparency and participation is the goal. And what drives that the best, and if we come up with an opinion on that, we can make some decisions if we change anything.
So, do you mind if I ask each person where they fall on this?
Yeah, sure, I mean, I mean, it's just a straw thing, we're not gonna make any action, I don't think, but yeah.
Mister Campbell, what do you think?
I like the idea of being able to stream it and they can see it when they want to, and if they wanna be here tonight and they wanna watch it, they can't come, they can't come, but they can see it. And there's a lot of people that maybe can't come because of certain physical disabilities and things like that, and if we delay it to the next day or the day after, then we haven't really gotten them to come on the night of the meeting. They just know they gotta wait till the next day to watch it. I don't see its significance in not going ahead and streaming it continuously, and if they don't get it, they don't get it, I mean, it's out there, but at least they get it tonight, after we do it, so I would be in favor of keeping it like it is.
Okay, Mister Shuck?
How many other municipalities livestream?
Uh, I think we found, anecdotally, it was a kind of a mixed bag, we were shooting off different municipalities we have familiarity with, and again, anecdotally, there was no real effort put into getting a count.
Okay, so we're just, alright, I'm, I'm just gonna hold my opinion for now, thank you.
Mister Merriman?
It's a sword that cuts both ways, I, um, definitely take advantage of it if I wanna see a committee meeting that's livestream. I can see how there are definitely times where, I, I think that if you try to engage the public to come, I think that you. And you get actual engagement out of the public, I think that what's nice about it is people can air their grievances, I think that when they have time to watch it. They might not watch the whole thing, they might only get an excerpt of it, and then they might form a different opinion and be angry about it, or be ecstatic about it and not get to see the whole thing, so. Whereas, I can see why people like it, to be able, if you can't be here, it's great to be able to get on and see at the same token, I don't necessarily know if it matters if you watch it live versus if you don't. There's been many times where I've watched them and been like, I should probably drive up there right now, and then don't, but.
Okay. Um, and again, this is not the cut transparency, that it would be aired, the full thing would be aired, e- either it's live or it would be the next morning, um, there were just some different options, Ryan's on the rules committee, so we all spoke, so that's.
Again, the, it, it's just to be intentional, it's not, the idea is to make sure we provide the community with the best transparency and participation we possibly can, open for discussion, we could, we could do absolutely nothing, or make a change, or do temporary. It's, uh, there's no hidden agenda to try to change something for nefarious purposes, it's just to be diligent on our, you know, our position to make sure we're doing that for the community as far as visibility, transparency, and participation.
Um, anything else for you for other business? Mister Merriman? Um, I have one item, um, just as an advertisement for Thursday, there is a candidate night at the American Legion, I encourage all the public to get active, um, find out who's running for everything, so. Just wanted to plug that for the American Legion that they are hosting, that the Newark Advocate will be.
Mediating.
Mediating it, so.
Public service announcement.
Yep, Mister Green?
Design review. What do we wanna do for that, do we wanna advertise that?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. I had it written down, too. Yes, we need to advertise for design review, do you guys agree?
Yeah, if we have an open seat.
I'd like to prioritize anyone with any kind of architectural, design, construction, relevant experience.
It's a great opportunity for someone that wants to get involved, to get involved.
I think how it's written, they just have to be in Johnstown or an adjacent township. I think there was some latitude on that originally, because there was a highly sought-after professional lived in an adjoining township.
Okay, Ms., you got that? What's been wrong?
Do you have a certain window you want to leave open for, or?
Thirty days, sixty days, ninety days.
I'd say thirty days for now.
Starting right away?
Yes. Anything else, Mr. Green?
I have probably something, plug Halloween, trick-or-treat night.
Trick-or-treat night's coming up the thirty-first, and also the, um, a plug for the, um, Chamber of Commerce, they've got a whole event of Halloween items for the city to enjoy. Everything from kids to dogs to adults to anybody, so.
Next meeting's on Wednesday.
So it's, everybody can attend, there's something for everybody, so, um, if you want information about that, you can ask me or contact the Chamber of Commerce, they'll have a lot of information. Um, our next meeting will be on November eighth, that is a Wednesday, um, voting as of November seventh, reminder to get out there and vote.
Get out there and vote.
Mr. Stainer, do you have anything?
As you can tell, I'm packing up, so now. It's been, it's been a long meeting after long meeting over the last three to four weeks. Uh, I did attend, real quickly, I did attend the Monroe Township meeting, uh, last night, uh, to discuss the M O U that we're, we're working through with the water and sewer. Uh, good questions were asked by the township trustees, Steve Samuels, our legal representative was there to help answer some questions, getting great feedback. We also attended the Liberty Township trustee meeting last week as well, um, good feedback from them as, as, as we're trying to work through this document, so just letting you know that I've attended the Liberty Township, uh, Monroe Township. St. Albans Township was Tuesday, which was the same night as the P D district review, uh, so I flipped a coin, I stayed here, no. Uh, I stayed here, Steve Samuels went down there and represented the city of Johnstown. We've been so busy, we haven't had the opportunity to really unpack the entirety of that conversation, but some of the, some of the briefness of it, they had about fifty residents there, which they get a, they get a lot of people, I think, because of the, the other things that are happening in, in St. Albans Township. So I did not get a thumbs down, it was good conversations, uh, well-received, and, uh, we'll continue that discussion, um, as, as, as necessary. So our intent was not to have any type of resolution passed by these organizations, the first night was more for introduction, get their feedback, we intend to go to the next meeting as well, um, so I'll be attending the next township meetings for Liberty and Monroe. Steve may attend the St. Albans, I may have the opportunity depending on if we have a zoning meeting that night or not. So just keeping you up to date on those items that are happening.
Awesome. Anybody else? Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
I second that. Thank you guys for coming, thank you for staying with us for so late.